Good evening. The Plymouth Township Charter Board of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, February 27, 2018 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Trustee Dorsevitz is on his way here in his temporary excuse. Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Mr. Supervisor, we have a call.
Okay, thank you. Next is item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Paul Sharp, would you like to lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafraid, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Looking for item C, Approval of Agenda. Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Comments or questions from the board? Mr. Supervisor? Can't hear you. Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next up is item E, Public Comments and Questions. We've got a lot of new folks here tonight, which is great. I would just request that we have a public comments section typically at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, and then also on individual agenda items. So this is not your only opportunity tonight to talk on a matter on the agenda. I would ask, though, that we, for the future agenda items, let's just keep it relevant to the issue at hand, and again, address your comments to the board. At this time, are there any public comments and questions on any matter of general interest? Yes. You're going to have to come to the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Supervisor. I've got two requests. One, I was wondering if your honorable body will revisit that issue about the curbside trash pickup where we have bins now for the recyclables. I think sometime in the past, I didn't have the opportunity to come to a meeting, there was some discussion about having them for solid waste, and I would ask if you would please reconsider that because I think it's a very handy procedure and approach to take your trash bin out there for the solid waste, to pick it up, to let the truck come by with the iron and automatically put it in. Several reasons, they don't have a tendency to be blown in the middle of the street when there's a strong wind. Secondly, sometimes when the fellows pick up the trash, they're in a hurry and they throw the thing down on the ground, you might find your solid waste container, several parts of your property. So I think that recyclable bins are very good, and I would ask that you consider doing it also for solid waste. The second request or comment has to do with North Territorial Road and Ann Arbor Road, and you probably know what I'm going to say. They're impossible to drive down, and it's terrible at night. I don't know if it's a county road or state road, but whatever influence that you have, please get those things fixed because it's just too expensive to get tires replaced. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
And I want to thank you very much. My name is Jim Amar. I live at 9650 Red Maple Drive.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the public at this time? If not, we're going to move on. Is there anybody here from Watkins Ross actuaries? You guys look like actuaries, but you're not. All right. Well, then, what I would like to do then is let's get Kevin Kubaki here from the state of Michigan to talk about the OPEB issue. We may want to revisit this later tonight if Watkins Ross arrives. So Kevin, tell us a little bit about yourself while we set up your PowerPoint, and then give us a little explanation as to why you're here, and hopefully your presentation will be working.
Is this our copy?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
First off, I wanted to thank this honorable body for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you about my topic today. So I am here to speak to you. Well, a little bit of background about myself. I used to be a design manager for the state's retirement systems. I now work exclusively mostly with the city of Detroit through the Department of Treasury as the executive director of the Financial Review Commission. So today I wanted to talk, I've been asked to come and brief you guys, on the Retirement Protection, the Retirement Benefit Protection Act. I will refer to it as Public Act 202 for short, but it was an act that was designed to help protect retiree benefits. So... Yep. So to give you some background on Public Act 202, in January of 2017, Governor Rick Snyder announced the creation of a task force that was focused on looking at underfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities across the state. So this task force was made up of a wide range of individuals, individuals representing state officials, individuals representing unions and employees of local governments, and union, or, and members of, that represented local units of government. And we also had insurance managers of large pension firms or pension organizations as well that sat on this task force. So the problem that they were trying to solve is, right now, according to 2016 information, the state's got, in an aggregate total, about an $18.8 billion unfunded liability of legacy costs, specifically about $9.7 billion of unfunded pension costs and about $9.1 billion of OPEB costs. So this was a big concern, and this is why the governor wanted to take a look at this, you know, and the primary reason of why this task force was put together. So one of the things that was noted very quickly when the task force was created is that not all local units of government had the same issue. Some pension systems and OPEB systems or retiree healthcare are very well-funded at certain local units of government, other governments not so much. So they realized that there was a not one-size-fits-all solution to the problem. So with, the task force came to a consensus on the following bullet points here. So they felt that there was a greater need for reporting and transparency on pension and OPEB. The state needed to develop a pension and OPEB fiscal stress test system, the creation of this municipal stability board, and the funding of OPEB normal cost for new hires. Now, a lot of that stuff is, I'll get into here, and if there's any questions, please stop me. I'll be, you know, I'm ready to answer them. PA 202 follows what these recommendations out of the task force were. So, you know, the first question is, who's impacted, which local units of government? And it's really any city, village, township, any public body that offers a defined benefit pension or defined benefit OPEB system, of which Plymouth Township does have both. So some of the key impacts of Public Act 202, you know, as I mentioned before, they followed a task force recommendation. I mentioned that, hey, the task force says you need to, the state needs to create a fiscal stress test for pension and OPEB. In the law, it's referred to as an evaluation system. They also, as part of the law, created this municipal stability board. There's additional transparency requirements, funding requirements, and also actuarial requirements that I'll get into at the end of the presentation. Public Act 202 requires the treasurer to essentially determine a, every local unit of government's retirement system underfunded status, and this determination is made annually. And essentially what this is, is there could potentially be a fiscal stress within a local government if, if, there could be a stress on a local unit of government if these following triggers are hit. We're not saying, you know, it's not necessarily set in stone, but it's a, there could be a problem here. So in the law, there's a test on pension and OPEB, and the triggers are a little bit different for each system. For pension plans, there's two criteria. You have to have, your pension plan has to be at least 60% funded, so in other words, have assets to cover 60% of the liabilities outstanding, and the actuarial determined contribution, also referred to as your ARC, or your annual required contribution, can't be more than 10% of your governmental fund revenues. So these items are actually pulled directly out of your audited financial statements. So that's where Treasury is going to get this information. For OPEB plans, it's a little bit different. The triggers are at a different level. For healthcare, retiree healthcare plans, they have to be at least 40% funded. The state has, you know, when they, when they developed this law, to give you some background, they understood that there could be a little bit of a delay. Some systems are using Pago, and it could take a while before they start to catch up, essentially, and that the annual required contribution has to be 12% of your governmental fund revenue. So I just want to make a clear distinction here. In order to be triggered for underfunded status, both of those criteria have to be met, and it's on every pension and every OPEB system, which you guys have both, so we'll look at both those triggers.
Kevin, could you, I'm sorry, could you, if we go back, could you give us a definition of governmental funds?
Governmental fund revenue?
Yeah.
In your audited financial statements, you will have fund, and I hate to geek out on you here, I get to practice my CPA, you know, so try not to put you to sleep too much here. Sorry for any other accountants out there. It's a, in your audited financial statements, you will have fund-based financials, and your, for example, your general fund is a governmental fund. So it'll be like your general fund, all of the revenue of that, plus probably some streets, street funds that are considered governmental activities. All of the, the sum of all of those revenues will equal that portion of the trigger.
When you look at the, at the analysis of the revenue and the numbers, are you looking right now, what fiscal year, what audited year are you looking at right now?
Right now, we are looking at local government's 2017 audits. So your, a audit is typically due six months after your fiscal year end, which I believe you guys are at December 31 year end. So your audited financial statements will be due June 30. At the same time, there's a form that will be required to be filled out by the township staff that we will also, by June 30, be looking at that as well. You know, that's when we'll make the determination. So what happens if you, if you get into underfunded status? So there's two, two things that happen. The law allows for you to say, hey, look, I've tripped underfunded status. However, my board, my township, we've already created a plan, it just hasn't taken effect yet. What you can do at that point is request for a waiver, okay? And what a waiver will do is it'll say, we've already are attempting to address this. What a waiver is going to require is an action that the board has already taken. It can't, it's not going to look at prospective changes that say, well, we are going to renegotiate contracts with the union and stuff. It's not forward-thinking because that will get further into what I go into next. It's a action that the board has already taken to help protect those retirees' benefits. If a waiver is not approved, or you don't request for a waiver from underfunded status, then you'll be referred to the municipal stability board. So this is a three-person board, and right now, we're actually looking for people that are willing to sit on this board. So I got a shameless plug. It's a three-person board. One member represents state officials, one member represents local officials, one member represents employees and retirees.
That's a custom board for each municipality that comes?
Before, or it's a statewide board?
It's a state, great question. It's actually a statewide board. The members will serve under all locals. Good question. That was actually modified and changed in the law multiple times when they were looking at it. It's a great question. When you get to the municipal stability board, so at this point, your plan has been determined to be underfunded, and you didn't get a waiver from the state treasurer. So the Department of Treasury, well, actually, the municipal stability board, you will have to submit a corrective action plan that says, this is how we are going to address this underfunded status. And the municipal stability board's goal is to approve or reject that, and there's a whole lot of back and forth. I don't want to get too much into that yet because that process is still being refined and detailed out, but at that point, if you're determined to be underfunded, you're going to have to submit a corrective action plan. So a lot of, you know, there's a lot of push out there to try to get it taken care of before it gets to this point.
If I could just ask, though, you don't want to get into all the detail of
Sure.
that, but what's the ultimate hammer that this board or the state has?
The ultimate hammer is, is that you will always be required to continue to be appearing in front of the municipal stability board. It's a, I mean, that's a really good question. There's no, right now, they don't have anything that says this is, you know, we're going to take away revenue sharing, per se. But what it is, is a, it's a good thing to help get these retirement systems out of a issue, get them funded to start protecting the retirees' benefits, to, you know, to help. Otherwise, you will be, continue to be in the cycle of the municipal stability board.
Do they, do they have similar powers to an emergency manager? I mean, can they order a community to do certain things?
They cannot. It goes through a lot of arbitration practices.
Kevin, another question. The, I'm assuming this is an annual process. You could be in compliance one year, and then the next year you dip below. How, how long is a waiver good for?
A waiver is good for one year.
Okay.
Yep.
What does the word "fund" mean? When you say must fund normal cost of new hires, does that mean when you hire a new employee, you must place in a trust fund the present value of the future premiums?
Yes. And if you would, would you please go up a couple of slides? I'm glad you're, you're leading me into my next couple of slides. Thank you. So the question is, is what does it mean to fund a new hire's benefit? You know, there's a couple of different approaches to, if you hire a new employee and you offer him or her retiree healthcare after July 1, 2018, you must fund this thing called normal cost. Essentially, set aside money to start paying for this person's retiree benefit when they go to retire. It's now a new, that's one of the new requirements of funding under the law. And what, your actuaries can kind of explain to you a little bit further what normal cost is. What normal cost is essentially what the cost of accruing one year of retiree healthcare is in one year. So it's the cost of that benefit for one year.
So not 30 years worth?
Not 30 years, just one year. So you only have to fund, the 30-year piece is the second element of the ARC, which is your unfunded portion. You only have to, and that's the all prior stuff. So essentially, what they tried to do with this element of the law is, they understand that this, that underfunded systems are, there's a lot, you know, a $9.1 billion OPEB liability out there. There is a challenge there, and a lot of local units of government haven't started pre-funding this at all. So by forcing, or I shouldn't say forcing, by changing the law to say, we're going to fund new, normal cost for new employees only, it helps to not make the problem get any Does that answer your question?
So you only put in one year's, if it costs $20,000 for the, for the present year?
Yep.
You put an inflated, use a discount rate, and you put the future value into a trust fund?
A lot of people would say, yes, it would be wise to put it into a trust fund, you know, some type of vehicle that is tax-deferred or tax-free. A lot of, you know, there's, and the actuaries can help block it through, you know, the IRS 115 trusts that are typically set up for this. But yes, it's one year of accrued benefit is what you would have to put away or put into a reserve.
Basically, that's what you should have been doing all along if you were, if your goal was to be 100% funded, you would be doing that.
That is best, of best practice for funding a retirement system, yes. Let's go back to the transparency requirements. So also, as part of the law, you're going to, you, there's a new report that must be submitted, called the Annual Retiree Healthcare Report. Also, too, as part of the, of the new law, the treasurer's got to establish what they call uniform actuarial assumptions. So what were you, what they were trying to do with this particular element is, no, two pension systems are hardly ever the same. One might have a investment rate of return of 8%, which bring, effectively brings down their liability, where another retirement system might be at 7%, which effectively makes them look less as funded. However, one of them's more conservative than the other. So there was a lot of debate among the task force members. So as part of the law now, there's going to be some uniform assumptions that will be developed by the Department of Treasury. These are still in development and will be coming out over the next couple of months, what they will be. Also, too, there was some actuarial requirements that came in as part of the bill. You're going to have to have an actuarial experience study on the plans every five years. This is another one of the best practices of running a system. Essentially, what an actuarial study does is it takes a look at, this is what, this is what we assumed was going to happen versus what really happened, and do we need to change our actuarial assumptions to be more in line with what really happened? Also, too, peer actuarial audits must be completed, or you have to get a new plan actuary every eight, it should be every eight years. Those need to be changed. Small plans with under 100 members are not subject to that requirement.
100 members retired, or 100 members including active and retired?
Good question. Both, active and retired, 100 members. Oh, active and, and retired.
So we would fall into that. If we just had retirees, we could be out of it. This looks like it, the actuary full employment bill.
So for a community that is triggered under this law and must go through the Get Well Plan, what would be the responsibilities of local government management? It's my understanding that we would be compelled to meet with the, meet with our unions on a Get Well Plan. We would have to meet really, kind of what we're doing right now amongst ourselves, to determine the scope of the liability and what measures have been previously taken to possibly offset that liability, which I think we'll be talking about later. And then, we, I guess the third thing is, looking down the road, we have to develop the fund, which we don't have, and then demonstrate that we are putting money into that fund.
Yep.
Are you looking for, is every, is every community going to be on a case-by-case basis, or do you tend to have some kind of a, of a formula that you're looking for? Percentages, dollar amounts, et cetera, from, from, from the various communities that are under the gun?
No, that's, that's a great question, Kurt. Pension and OPEB funding, so first off, to address some of the first part of your comments.
Well, let's stay on the OPEB first.
Okay, just on OPEB. So I will say this, the legal protections for OPEB and pension are different, and they are something you want to review with legal, with your legal counsel. And that, the second part of your question is, there is no, we, the Department of Treasury understands that there is a, not all plans are the same. They're very unique, and all local governments are unique in how they've responded to funding these in the past and where they are today, and how, and if they are crowding out other essential services. So there is not a one-size-fits-all approach or solution to it, so Treasury will treat that as such. There are triggers in place that will just, at first, like I said, that do a preliminary determination of underfunded status, of which then you can apply for a waiver. If, you know, if you're saying, hey, we have addressed this, this isn't an issue in our community, we can move forward. If not, then you'll go to the municipal stability board for a corrective action. Does that answer your?
Okay, I guess on OPEB, so what about, what about retirement, then?
For pension?
Yeah.
So for pension, the pensions are protected by the state constitution. At that point, a lot of, a lot of the fixes are to change the benefit for new employees or to start funding the system, you know, maybe faster than your ARC, and that's, that's another conversation you can have with your actuary about proper, you know, things that you can do to change your funding and how to get that funded ratio up.
So you know what our percentage is right now, right, on retirement, on pension?
I have not seen your 2017 audited financial.
Okay, all right.
But we all, we were in a defined benefit for six full years. Well, no, that was with the city of Plymouth. So then we, we ended in 12, or it was either six to eight years was defined benefit for new employees, or existing and then new employees. Now, we have defined contribution for all new hires. I don't know what date that went into effect. 13, maybe? Something like that. So we have a far less, we fix the future problem.
Mm-hmm. And that's, you know, what we've seen, that is something that if you were to ever trigger, and I can't say if you guys are triggering, but those are, those are things that you need to have as commentary that says, hey, we've tried to tighten this up, and we've addressed it by doing X, Y, and Z.
Just, just to confirm what a trigger is, going back to that one slide, so...
Just, just to confirm what a trigger is, going back to that one slide, so for OPEB, you have to be under 40% funded, and your ARC has to be less than 12% of your governmental funds revenue.
That's correct.
It has to be both of them.
Both of those for you guys.
Gotcha, thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
And the pension is part of it, too?
Pension is too.
Right, so you have to have two, two things, right? You have pension and OPEB have to have both trigger to get the special treatment from the treasurer. The hearing.
Let me clarify that, just to make sure that I'm, your OPEB system can trigger independently of your pension system.
All right, I thought you said that we needed both of those conditions, pension and OPEB.
There were, there were two conditions for OPEB and two conditions for pension.
So that was the two you meant?
That's what I meant, sorry about the confusion.
Not, not the pension and OPEB together triggering?
Right.
Okay.
Well, just, did you say you were working with the city of Detroit?
Yes.
I'm just curious, what's their OPEB percentage that?
Actually, as part of the bankruptcy, they had some, most of their OPEB remotes.
Paid for by the other taxpayers in the state of Michigan? Right? I think we'd like that.
Thank you very much. If there's no more questions?
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate the, the chant, no peek in front of you.
Okay, I think we have someone here from Watkins Ross. This man is either a lawyer or an actuary, or both. But I was right that, are you Christopher?
Yes, Chris.
Chris, got it.
Thank you, Kevin.
I, I mentioned it briefly in here, but it's nowhere near the details, so I'm glad that that was covered. And so what I'd like to do is, go ahead and go to the next slide, is first talk about why GASB, and it's now even more germane with Public Act 202. And then the next thing I want to do is show some results from our last actuarial evaluation. And then again, I mentioned that I did include a little bit about Public Act 202, but we can mostly skip through that because you've already heard that, and then talk briefly about changes to consider. So first of all, why GASB? Why do you look at this liability? The, for years?
Time out for a second.
Yes.
Will, is this being heard on the recording?
Okay, there, is that better?
Maybe you want to pick it up?
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So the question is, why GASB? Why are we going through this exercise in the first place of determining a liability, of determining an annual cost? And we can present the answer in a number of ways, and this, I know this illustration dates me, and for those of you who've seen me talk before, I've used this illustration before, but the employer is essentially saying to the employee, when they offer them retirement benefits, that I will pay you tomorrow for the work you do today. That's, that's the agreement. Now, you, when we all saw Blimpy do this, we kind of shuddered and said, well, who would make a deal like that? But we do realize there's a value in that retirement benefit, but we often lose sight of the fact that that is given in the future in exchange for service today. So the first thing that GASB wants to accomplish is to attribute that future cost to today's service. And so that's, that's task, that's task number one, if you will. So how do we go about doing that? Or let me get back to the why here. This is an illustration that I put together that shows the projected retiree medical benefits for your current active population. And the blue line is the projection of your current active population. Now, it's scaled, just so that they can show up comparably on this graph. But for instance, you have 91 active people who could potentially receive this benefit somewhere in the future. I just multiplied that by 10,000 to make it scalable to compare with the projected benefit payments. But what you, you need to see there is that the projected benefit payments take place at some point in the future, whereas the active employment and the service they're giving is taking place right now. And as those active lives trend down, then the cost attributable to them, once they get to retirement, is trending up. And there's this concept called intergenerational equity, where future active people will bear the cost of these current active people somewhere in the future. Or put another way, your taxpayers will be paying not only for the active service of the people that will be serving them at some point in the future, they could be bearing the cost in the future, too, of these current actives. So there's that trend, that transfer of cost between generations that GASB wants to avoid. Go ahead and flick to the next slide. This next slide, I tacked on top of the projected benefit payments for your current active population, I added to that the projected benefits for your current retirees. So you could see that disconnect is even larger. Go ahead, next one. This is what GASB wants to do, is take that future benefit and establish an annual cost that matches up with your active lives while they are giving you that service, so that when you take a look then at your total compensation package, you're not only looking at current salary, current benefits, but you're also looking at, hopefully, the cost in an appropriate way of that future benefit as well. So that's why we go through the exercise. All right, go ahead. Now, this is how we come up with it, and I will confess, this is, the scale is really bad, because retirement to death is really much longer than hire to retirement is showing there. So proportionally, it's way off, but conceptually, hope you'll get it. But, so there's a timeline, hire today, retirement and death for an individual. Go ahead, yeah. So then, we project what we expect the future benefits to be for that individual. Go ahead. And we discount it, and this is what the gentleman from Treasury was talking about. If you discount that to today's date at 8%, you'll get one liability. If you say, well, it's discounted at 7%, you'll get a liability that's not quite as small, because you're only discounting it 7% a year. Or if you discount it only at 3% a year, it's even bigger yet, less of a discount. So what discount rate you use is highly significant.
Can I interrupt if we have a question in there?
Oh, did you go back? I seem to have missed a, there it is.
So today, we have not set up a trust fund.
You have not set up a trust fund.
So we're defaulting to a 3.8% discount rate?
Correct.
If we had invested, if we had a trust fund, could we assume a higher rate of return and a higher discount rate?
Yes, the, if you set up a trust, then the way that GASB is structured is, you get to take into account the amount of money you have in that fund to establish a reasonable rate of return on that money, depending on how it's invested. Now, I have some clients who are invested very conservatively in fixed income, and their discount rate ends up being really close to that 3.8% anyway. But I have others that enjoy higher returns because they're in equities, and then we can blend in the expected return on those equities with whatever the borrowing rate is for the municipality. A 20-year AA bond rate is what, is what GASB requires to be blended in with the expected return on assets.
But with that equity investment comes the associated risk.
Yes.
Of fluctuations in the stock market.
That is correct, yeah. And, and not to, and not to belittle that, that is a very important thing, and that's why some of the municipalities are invested as conservatively as they are to avoid that risk, and that is certainly a discussion worth having. Any well-balanced portfolio is going to have some form of equity, and if you think about the unfunded portion as essentially matching up with your general operating funds, which are very conservative, then if you look at it in that way, that does represent to a certain extent a blend, a mixed portfolio. Oh, I'm sorry, go back one more, just because I wanted to talk about that service cost component that the man, the gentleman from Treasury was talking about. Once we come up with that value today of those future benefits, we spread it over the working lifetime of the individual, and the cost associated with one year, or a portion of that present value that's earned in one year, is the service cost for an individual, and that's one of the components that makes up the annual required contribution. The other portion he was talking about are all the service costs that should have been set aside, or have accumulated to date, that's the actuarial accrued liability. So a lot of times, when somebody looks at their actuarial accrued liability, they think, okay, that's all there is, if I put 16 million in the bank and I cover my actuarial accrued liability, I'm all set. There's still that whole portion of the present value of future benefits from today to retirement that still has yet to be earned. So those are the service cost components of future service that, that have to go into our calculations. So here's some summaries from the report that shows, as of December 31 of 2016, the liability under the new GASB calculations is $15.7 million. The service cost, the cost of additional allocation of present value of benefits for the group is $280,000. And since we'll be discounting when going from the beginning to the end of the year, we'll be discounting by one less year, roughly 3.8% interest on that $15 million is another $597,000. So that accrued liability as of the end of 2016 will grow to the end of 2017 by one more year of service, that's the service cost, the $280,000. It will grow with interest, one less year of discounting, that's the $597,000. And then, it will decrease by whatever benefits are paid out during the year, that's the $577,000. The other, the $342,000, that was change in actuarial assumptions. Part of it was an update in the mortality table that we were using, and another part of it was the assumption of when somebody with a covered child goes from family status to double status. And we, at one time, were assuming that by the time somebody gets to 55, their covered children would be done being covered by the plan, but with changes under the Affordable Care Act, and people having children later, we moved that from 55 to 60. So we have five more years of family coverage, instead of just double coverage in that slot. So those two things added that $342,000 of liability.
Do any of these slides correspond to the handout? Since it's not very readable, the white letters?
Yes, for those of you, for those of you who have a copy of the report, what page is that, sir?
Page four.
Page four?
Page four has a different title, though, in here, it says, net OPEB liability, doesn't say GASB 74. But it's the same thing?
But, but yes, the, the report that we've provided for you is compliant with GASB 74 and GASB 75. But, yeah, so those are the, those are the values shown on page four. Then also, at the bottom of page four, excuse me, the, part of the GASB requirement is also to show sensitivity calculations. What if the discount rate were 1% lower, and what if the discount rate were 1% higher? This gives you an idea of the impact of the change in that discount rate. If we just lowered the discount rate from 3.8 to 2.8, that liability is now $18 million instead of 16. And the other way, if we had used 4.8 instead of 3.8, the liability would have been only $14 million. This is where we can get accused of fuzzy math, because you say, well, look, it's all just assumptions, anyway. Well, yes, but the, the objective here is to as closely as possible align your liabilities with your assets. So at some point on your balance sheet, you might have $20 million in general operating funds. Then the question is, what is the appropriate amount of liability to offset those assets with somewhere else in your balance sheet to represent these liabilities? It ought to reflect the cost of money on your asset side. So that's where the GASB steps in and says, you must use a 20-year AA municipal bond rate, whose rates are right in that 3% to 4% range, and that's where we come up with the 3.8%. As much as possible on your balance sheet, matching whatever liabilities you have with whatever assets you have. And then one other sensitivity is the healthcare inflation assumption. What if you assumed 1% higher inflation and 1% lower inflation? And not surprisingly, those tend to be awash with your discount rates. So a 1% higher inflation is going to match up pretty closely with a 1% lower discount rate, and vice versa. So you see, the $18 million for a 1% increase in your trend is going to match up pretty closely with a 1% decrease in your discount rate, and we see that very often in our reports.
Chris, I might be jumping ahead, but when, when you're talking about assumptions, it triggered a question.
Yep.
Because you, this is all based upon assumptions, at what age people are going to die, and at what age they're going to retire, and how.
Correct.
And how long their children are going to be on the plan, et cetera, et cetera. Are you, do you use the same assumptions for all of your clients across the state?
No.
So are these, I don't know a better way to say, are these negotiable?
Negotiable? That, that's a fair question. Let me, let me backdoor that answer. The reason we don't use, necessarily use the same assumptions across the state is because we try to tailor it as much as possible to the reality for that group. Now, if you've got a retirement plan that provides for unreduced pension benefits at age 55, and another municipality, not until 60, we're going to take that into account in terms of what our assumed retirement age is. We're also ultimately just going to look at your experience and say, what, you know, how often are people retiring? So that's, that's a difference. In terms of mortality, that's much more common. So general municipal mortality across the board is going to be pretty consistent throughout the state of Michigan. There might be some minor differences if one municipality, well, I do a library, so they don't have police and they don't have fire, so their mortality will probably be a table that's more conservative than a municipality that has police and fire and so forth in it. Now, with respect to the negotiability part of it, the treasurer indicated that, the man from Treasury who spoke just a few minutes ago, indicated that one of the objectives of this new Public Act 202 is to prescribe uniform assumptions across the board, so that there's comparability, so that I don't tell you 3.8% in the discount rate, and another actuary tells your neighbor, oh, 8% is good, that you lose comparability then between those two statements. So that's one reason they want to publish those rates. But with, with all of our work and the current GASB system, there is a certain level of comparability between them, because the way we calculate that discount rate is now prescribed by the GASB statement. So there's a consistent approach, even though the percentage itself might differ a bit, depending on whether they're funded, depending on what the AA bond rates are at the end of the fiscal year, there's still a consistent approach from one to the other. Go ahead, go to the next slide. Oh, you are on it already, thank you. Thank you. Okay, this this is another page in your report that shows what the expense, and there is a there is a page in your report that says GASB 45. Because GASB 45 can still be effectively used for determining your OPEB obligation for 2017, we did provide that in the report, but for comparability, we wanted to show GASB 75, which is the expensing for the year. And the expense now, under the new GASB standard, says that we have to calculate the service cost for the year and the interest cost for the year. Both of those are included in the expense. And then this change in assumptions, instead of recognizing that whole $300,000 change in assumption all at once, we're going to defer a portion of it over the average future working lifetime of the group. So instead of $300,000 of assumption changes, we're only picking up, it looks like, $80,000 of assumption changes. And those three components, and the service cost for the year, the interest cost for the year, plus the recognition of the portion of that assumption change generates the expense for the year.
What is the number on the far right lower column, so I know if I'm on the right page?
Far right lower column, it's on page six of your report. So it's $938,000 of expense for the year, and that takes into account into account the service cost. That's the cost of one year service for your active population. Interest cost, that's the passage of time from the beginning to the end of the year, one less year of discounting on the entire liability, and then a portion, a recognition, a portion of the of the assumption change. And as I look at a clearer page here, it's 60,080. So the total expense for the year for this plan is 938,000.
Is that the amount that you're saying from an actuarial standpoint should be put away?
In the old GASB standard, that was the answer. They were linked. The accounting and the required contribution were linked, and they were one in the same. Under the new accounting standard, they they've decoupled that, and they've said, all we want to do on the accounting side is be able to show you how you get from the beginning of year liability of that 15 million to the end of the year liability of 16 million. That is roughly a million dollars difference. You have an expense of roughly a million dollars. That's all they're concerned with. So what we've done in the report, since since the accounting and the contribution are now no longer connected, we've done a calculation, it's on page eight of your reports, and I didn't include that slide here, so we can just sit right here for a minute. But for for the members of the board who have that report on page eight, what we do is we calculate a recommended contribution for the year, and it does include the cost of one year's service. So you have that service cost of $293,000. You say, wait a minute, I thought you just said it was like 203,000 and what have you. We roll it forward to the end of the year with interest, and we take an amortization of the unfunded liability. We say, okay, let's pay for one more year of service. That's going to be rendered by your active population, and let's amortize or start to pay off the unfunded liability, and that amortization is 2.1 million. So you come up with a recommended contribution for the year of 2.4 million.
You're on, I don't see this on page eight. Am I on the wrong page?
Page eight, bottom.
Page eight at the bottom, on the, under the schedule.
Actuarially determined employer contribution?
2.436.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the one.
So could you say that briefly again? That's the.
Yes, that would be the recommended contribution intended to do two things. One, pay off or pay for one more year of service. That's the $292,000. And then the second piece is to amortize, pay off the unfunded liability. That's the 2.1 million, so that the recommended contribution for the year would be 2.4 million.
So that's the the prior gentleman from Treasury, that's the arc that he was referring to?
That's the arc.
And if that is truly our arc, that 2.1 million, then we we have triggered both of his conditions, and we would fall into that. We would fall into that that bad place.
You'd fall into that bad place. However, one of the things he also alluded to was how long can you take to pay off that unfunded liability? For recommended contribution purposes, we use nine years because that's the average future working lifetime. If you were to say from budgeting standpoint, say, let's use 20 years or 30 years, that number would be lower. So so that's part of the answer to that. The other is that this is where I believe the Treasury is going to weigh in, in addition to their assumptions, to say, the number of years you're going to have to spread that over, amortize that over, is going to be X, so that everybody's using something that's the same, and that we don't just get into saying, well, let's use 30 just so that you, you know, don't meet that trigger.
Can you, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. You're using nine years of amortization. Why did you come up with nine years?
That is the average future working lifetime for the active group that's covered. And so if the if the recommendation, and again, it's a recommended contribution, not a required contribution, if the recommendation to you is to say, what would it take to pay for an additional year of service and fund up what's already been earned by your active and retiree population by the time people get to retirement to avoid that intergenerational equity issue, then that nine years would be your your target horizon.
So that the nine years is looking at our active employees.
Yep.
And and on an average, what, how many years they are to retirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This assumes that nothing is done to reduce.
This so far assumes that nothing is done to reduce the cost. So with that, maybe let's scroll down and see once, okay, I guess we better not gloss over this, although we have referred to this already. The the discount rate that we're using in this calculation, as I already said and that you already pointed out, is 3.8%, and that's because that aligns with 20-year municipal bond rates in effect as of the end of your fiscal year, and that's consistent with the requirements of the standard. We also, for the mortality tables, the IRS publishes tables annually based on studies and updated for expected improvements. So we're we're using those contemporary tables for your group. There is, there are tables that are more conservative than these based on studies done on private employers. Our sense was, again, because of the nature of the employee mix with the higher stress levels that come with jobs such as police and fire, that using that that more conservative table would not be appropriate. So these, so we've used these tables pretty consistently for our municipalities. The return on assets, as you see indicated here because you are not funded, is not applicable. Our payroll inflation is 3%. That comes from the from the township. Medical inflation is 7.5% graded down to 4.5 over six years. What that means is that right now, we expect your inflation to be between 5% and 10% a year, but as time passes, we expect that to trend down and down and down. And you say, wait a minute, why would why would these things trend down? The the expectation is, as costs become a greater and greater piece of the GDP countrywide, that either market forces or government intervention will be such that that will start to bring that down. And we have, we have started to see some of that from what was going on before. Dental and vision, 3%. That typically tracks with inflation and dental and vision and the costs, and built into that is the consumer price index of 2%. So those are, those are some key assumptions I wanted to hit on from the report. Public Act 202, I won't spend any more time on this. I think that was covered pretty thoroughly, but it all, it does, you know, motivate more intentionality about whether you're going to decide to fund this or not or make plan changes. And then some changes to consider. Before I get into these, I'll just say that we've already talked a little bit about pre-funding. How does that impact your plan? One, it impacts it directly from the standpoint of the funded status of your plan. The more money you put in, the better your your funded ratio is. And by the way, this this piece of the presentation isn't in your report. The report is strictly the GASB. So so that that that's one way it impacts your funded status, just by having the assets there. Another one that was mentioned was that if, I think it was Kurt that brought it up, if you have money set aside and that money is invested in such a way that you can get a higher return than what you would on a AA bond rate, that brings the discount rate we use in the liability up a little bit, which brings that liability down a little bit. So that also helps to improve the funded status of your plan if that's done done properly. So that's, that's not necessarily a plan change strategy, but it is a strategy to consider. With respect to changes that can be made to the plan, you can close the plan to new hires, which you've already done, and hence that average future working lifetime is now down to nine years. You can provide a stipend. Instead of allowing access to the plan that covers your your active employees, under the Affordable Care Act, a market for individual coverage was generated and created that was much more affordable than it was outside a group plan otherwise. So the only real solution prior to Medicare was to have them participate in your active plan, and that could be quite expensive. So now that there's an individual market out there, you could say, well, we will give you, say, $3,600 a year, go find your own coverage, go find your own plan. Well, how does that control your costs? Well, one is that you dictate on an annual basis what your increases will be. You might, you might decide not to give increases. So once you take inflation out of the equation, your liability is going to come down. The other thing is that participating in your active plan can cause your, the total cost of your active coverage to increase because retirees are older than the otherwise covered population. So you can control costs there as well. And then from the retiree standpoint, what's attractive about that option is that they can find a plan then that is more suited to their needs. Instead of a one-size-fits-all type of an approach, where you say, here's our deductible and here's our copay, and everybody's got that same coverage, you can, they go out and they find a plan that meets their needs. Say, high deductible is where they want to be. They have that opportunity. So so going to a stipend type of arrangement has a lot of attraction to it. Another thing that was mentioned by the gentleman from Treasury were these Section 115 trusts. And what they allow you to do is to negotiate with your covered lives and say, in lieu of this past liability, we'll have our actuary tell us what's the liability for each of these our covered lives and what would be a a fair or a comparable or make it an age service grid. Everybody who's age 50 with 10 years of service is going to get X number of dollars that will put in an account to make up for the past years of service, and then each year going forward, we're going to put another $1,000 into that account that will all accumulate once they hit retirement. That is a switch to the defined contribution arrangement that you've already done on the pension side, and we come full circle to my blimpy hamburger thing by saying, now, instead of paying you tomorrow for your service today, we're paying you today for your service today. And they take that money, they have it in an account, and now the retiree might say, wait a minute, am I getting the same level of benefit out of it? Here's, here's the tradeoff for them if it's not quite up to the same level of coverage that they would have gotten had they had a plan at retirement. One is it's portable. They say, I'm going to go somewhere else, that money goes with them. That's something right now, if they terminate before being retiree eligible, they don't get anything. So that's one advantage. The the other one is there's an implied vesting with it. Retiree healthcare coverage is not vested. Now, there are collective bargaining concerns and and issues to take into account, but as a rule, hook, you know, a push comes to shove, you can remove a lot of the benefits. If you've got this account balance, that's, that's their money, and there's some security in that. And the analogy I like to use is one of my clients made this switch, but in order to protect their older employees, they said, for everybody who's age 55 with, say, 20 years of service, you get to choose. Do you want to go to an account balance arrangement, or do you want to stay in your old plan? And I had a board member, 55 and 20-year-old, opt for the cash balance, even though it wouldn't get them the same level of coverage that staying in the plan would because there was security in that bird the hand is worth two in the bush type of type of security with actually having an account balance. And and one more quick analogy on that point, when the gentleman from Treasury mentioned that that the big three automakers, oh, he mentioned Detroit, but the big three automakers settled a lot of their retiree medical obligation as well, and they offered a settlement that amounted to 40% of the coverage they previously had, and they agreed to it strictly because it was money in the bank and there was that, there was that security, if you will, that that provided. So.
Are you referring to VIBA?
Well, then, often the way plans will be funded is through a VIBA, and I think that might have been the methodology they used, but if you were to go this type of route, you would, you'd likely go through a Section 115 trust, and there are a couple of organizations that will set that up for you. There are probably more than two, but I'm aware of two.
Do most of your clients in our area that you would consider comparables to us, do they already have a an OPEB trust fund already in place?
If you would have asked five years ago, I would have said, the vast majority are unfunded over the last five years. Most of my clients now have now have trusts set up. Now, they're not, they're not really well-funded. I mean, let's, you know, be upfront about that. We're talking 10%, 20%, so they got a long way to get to that 40, but most of them do have assets, and and we are blending in an expected rate of return on our discount.
Is it your professional opinion that we are triggered now under PA 202?
That would be my, yeah, I'm not sure what your revenue is, so that's, that's the wild card in terms of that contribution and the extent to which we can lengthen our amortization period on the annual required contribution. But obviously, you're triggered on the funded status piece. If I got the, if I got the revenue piece and could took, take a closer look at that percentage, I'd be able to tell you, but so we can, we can do that.
So we are, I mean, I'm talking with the treasurer here, and it sounds like we are triggered.
That you're triggered, yeah.
Triggered means what again?
Well, triggered means that, well, everybody's going to post their, post this information with the state, and then the state will shame you by by.
Means we're in the crosshairs.
Yeah, by letting you know, we're aware that you're not well-funded, but the initial legislation, when this first came out, was proposing putting in some kind of penalty or, but that's, they since backed off on that.
Well, there was, there was emergency manager language in the original bill, and the and the unions were able to take it out.
That's right. That's right.
So assuming that we are triggered under PA 222 with respect to OPEB, it is, you are offering, obviously not for free, but you're going to be offering to help us with our, the Get Well Plan, the remedy plan that we have to submit to the state.
Yes. And what will be interesting is if, is if we could point towards the fact that you've closed your plan, for instance, as one step in that remedy, but in terms of whether or not that's enough, my recommendation would be that you do more, and then we assist you in in developing that plan.
And your, your. And your analysis in front of us today, how you arrive at the 16-plus million dollars, that is based on, I'm really asking this on behalf of the public or anybody else, that's really based on the current labor agreements that we have with all the unions, correct?
Correct.
Any other factors that you take into consideration in terms of plans that we provide, or we don't really do anything else, I mean, in terms of funding, or trusts or anything?
Right.
That's all you got?
That's it.
Is it your understanding under PA 222 that we have to work with the unions as well as the administration to develop this remedy plan?
I asked legal counsel for another one of my clients about that because PA 202 says at the end of it, it has some language that says corrective action can include, or improving funded status may improve, and then it lists a series of steps that may be taken. And the question that was put to legal counsel was, does that supersede collective bargaining, or does it still have to go through collective bargaining? In other words, is this list a suggestion of, hey, here's things you might want to consider, or is the list designed to tell you, you have the right under the state to make these changes? And legal counsel didn't know the answer to that themselves. So I think that's something that is yet to be clarified on the part of the state. But some of these very things are mentioned in there. There's talk, on the pension side, for instance, of making retirement ages older, for instance.
Yeah, but that's going to be state policy.
Yeah.
And then you run into constitutional arguments at that point, too.
Oh, yeah.
We went through all of that with the Detroit bankruptcy.
Well, our pension liabilities will end in 2028, so we don't have a 50-year horizon to worry about.
But our pension payments over the next nine years are substantial.
Will increase to a million a year. So we have, but we have a cutoff. We have a, we have a roadmap there. But the OPEB, I think a lot of people don't realize that these are not collective bargaining items. These people are not employees, so it can be gentlemanly negotiated, or you could do what some communities do. They force everybody into the same plan, like the retirees into the same plan as the actives. You could reduce benefits, make changes for people that are over 65. There's a lot of actions that can be done. So these are not employees that have collective bargaining rights, and we learned that unfortunately at what General Motors did to many of their retirees. I'm not advocating that, but I'm pretty confident there's going to be some changes from what we currently have of this mishmash of many benefits and lots of choices and gold-plated plans for people who are under 65 years old. It's going to take political will.
Chris, question on municipal stability board, the third member, who represents the employees and the retirees? Is there any thought as to that being a union representative, employees?
Well, here's where I look nervously about for our man from Treasury who left, but, yeah, I'm not sure who they're looking at to fulfill that role, but the way I read that or understood it when I saw it was they would want that type of representation.
Are these people appointed by the governor or by the Treasury Director?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, because that's going to be a big factor, especially next year.
It'll be a real big factor for us.
Well, it's not going to be somebody from Plymouth Township.
No.
Or any of our employees.
But this is a state organization.
Yeah, it's a statewide thing. That's why I asked him, the three, is it three unique for each municipality?
No.
Or is it three statewide? And he said, three statewide.
Three statewide.
But they will be people who are aligned with, you know, an interest group.
Oh, sure. That's the way it should be, get a balanced approach.
Right, and maybe it said it in his handout, I don't recall, or if it's in the act itself, but it makes it pretty clear that they want people that have an understanding and a vested interest.
So walk us through the timelines. I don't have them committed to memory, but I think June 1st is the first big timeline that we have to do.
Yes. They wanted to do a big catch-up for all those plans that ended June 30 of 17 or before, all the fiscal years before that, and those are all due at the end, or were due at the end of January. But for everybody subsequent to that, it's six months after the end of the fiscal year. So for you, by June 30, you'll have to make this report.
For the pension liabilities, did you assume that we are going to receive $1.5 million from the city of Plymouth for legacy costs?
Chuck, they don't do our pensions. MERS does the pensions.
Okay, that's right.
They're strictly the actuaries for the OPEB.
So they only assumed the legacy costs that we have from the fire department for OPEB?
Yes.
All right, OPEB only.
I'm assuming that you have all the detail. When you talk about future liabilities and then discounting them back, I'm assuming that you could get your hands on a spreadsheet that shows what our anticipated liability is for the next, every year for the next 20 years or something like?
Yes, I can.
Can I, if I emailed you, could you, that would be helpful information for me, if I could get that level of detail.
Yep.
And then my second question is that when you talk about this trigger, this calculation of the ARC is going to become real important, and that assumption that you use a 9-year amortization becomes real important. I'm wondering, I mean, if we change 9 to 15, boom, we've solved the problem. I don't know how we negotiate that or look into it in more detail to determine if 9 is the right number or not.
Right. What's going to be the wild card in this, or tricky, however you want to think of it, is that the reporting for the state is to be based on your financial statements, okay? So that's one thing to remember. Now, the gentleman from Treasury mentioned 30 years. The only reason he could say 30 years right now is because under the old GASB, you could amortize your unfunded liability over 30 years as part of your ARC. Going forward, however, if they say, we're going to rely on your financial statements, your financial statements don't have an ARC per se anymore, now they have an expense, and the expense is service cost, interest cost, and an amortization of gains and losses and everything else that are under average future working lifetime. And the 30 years doesn't come into play at all under that definition. So the question that's going to be, that the Treasury's going to have to answer, is once we go to the new GASB standard for everybody after 2017, all municipalities are required to stay under the new GASB as of that date, and if the financial statements are what goes on the reporting, what's going to be the ARC? Because that's no longer a term that applies. And so then that question's going to be, okay, is it going to be the actuarially determined contribution that we threw in, you know, the bottom of that page of the report, or is it going to be your expense for the year? And if it's the expense for the year, that was that $900,000. And if you know right now, off the top of your head, that $900,000 is not in excess of 12% of your revenue, then you're fine on that trigger.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? There will be an exam afterwards. How unfunded is our liability? Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, it's zero. There are a few numbers I can do in my head, but I can do that one, because right now there are no plan assets.
No, 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 no. We have plenty of money to pay as we go right now and have been doing that.
Yep. Clearly, this has been kicked down the road for many years.
Yeah.
This is just another one of the problems that we've inherited.
The, I mean, just to not, I mean, you know, create panic and, oh my God, we're completely unfunded. The plug has been put into the system. Several years ago, a decision was made that future employees, so people who are employed today, do not go into the plan. So this is a problem that if we wait long enough, it corrects itself, right? The question is, how long is enough? Because there's people in the plan that could live for the next 40 or 50 years in the plan. So corrective actions have taken place. The real question becomes, and that's why we really have to work with the actuarial firm, is what is our short-term pain? How much can, you know, what is it going to cost us over the next 10 years? How many people are going to enter the plan? How many people are going to retire who are eligible and enter the plan? How many people, just to be mean, are not going to die and exit the plan? And what are the healthcare costs going to increase over time? And that's what we really have to figure out, is that short term. Over time, this corrects itself, but we don't know how much time we have and how quick it spikes, if that makes sense.
And over time, it corrects itself, but we now have the added factor of PA 202. I now have the state of Michigan, if you want to call it an unfunded mandate or whatever, I don't care, but the bottom line is the law is the law. I have to comply with the law by June 30th. And that means we do not have a trust, we do not have money, and we have to put a plan together in the next several months and submit it to the state. And we have to hope that they agree with our plan. Fair statement?
That summarized it well.
Well, the most important thing is that we have fixed the problem going forward several years ago. We don't have defined benefit pensions anymore, is one of the largest things. We have defined contribution, and most cities and townships do not have that enviable position. We made a mistake in 2005 where we switched from defined contribution to defined benefit for a short number of years, and it gave us a liability for pension that is pretty big.
And we are 60% funded right now, Mark? We're 65% funded in our pension, and the pension liability over the next nine years is substantial.
A million dollars a year.
Yeah. It's not cheap, and just saying. Okay.
But then it ends. It doesn't, most municipalities, it goes on forever.
It ends. I don't know what's left at that point, but okay. Thank you. I think we're all set from here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
All right. Very good.
I just want to keep moving. All right, Bob, welcome.
Thank you.
Next up is Item 2, Park Authority Village Presentation by Don Sunin and some others here from Park. Let me just say, before Don starts, I know that there's been some robo-calls going out tonight again from, I don't know, from who, but we are not voting on anything tonight. I want to make that very clear. This was billed as a presentation by Don Sunin. There are no votes that are going to be taken tonight by the board of any sort on this matter. This is just a straight-up presentation by Don. We're going to ask some questions. I will ask that you can ask some questions as well, but we're going to keep it focused to the matter at hand, and this is not a town hall wrap session regarding Park. Park has made that type of presentation in the past, Don, I think it was a couple months ago. You had a full house at the Penn Theater, and I know that there have been other presentations. There have been prior presentations made to the City Commission as well. So tonight, we'd like to welcome you, and we'd like to hear what you have to say about your plans for Park in the future.
And there will be more public forums as well as time goes on, so.
And you're going to have to use the...
That mic doesn't work.
No, just hold it, if you can.
All right, I'm Don Sunin, and appreciate you giving me the opportunity to address the board this evening. I'm president of Park and live at 4604 West Ann Arbor Trail, and I've been a resident of Plymouth Township now for 48 years, raised my family here, lovely community. Today, this evening, I really want to provide a short overview of Park, demonstrate a viable model for how we can move this forward, request that the trustees engage with the city commissioners, with Park, and the donors to the project to create a viable private-public ownership and governance structure. Also like to propose a timeline, and then we'll have questions and answers at the end. Currently, Park has 25 tenants. We have a couple more major ones coming in over the next couple of months. Oh, you're way out ahead of me there.
You're going like flying through it there, Sandy.
Right there. You get it. As I said, we've got two more coming in, very prominent tenants. These are organizations that have their offices in our facility permanently. They rent the space, they renovated it, they pay rent every month. They also use the theater, other facilities in the building, building sets, storing sets for theater operations and the like. 85% of the building is currently utilized, and that's after only two and a half years of being in the business. We have about 3,000 active participants, that's swimmers, theater performers, football players, and the like. These are just participants, not their siblings, parents, grandparents, or any of those that might attend events there. In a survey that was done last fall, I was a little surprised, but 84% of township residents said they were aware of Park, and 83% of them said they believed it added value. Only 6% of township residents said it didn't add any value to the community. So we're rather encouraged, certainly, with that kind of result. Some of the tenants, Michigan Philharmonic and Youth Orchestra, very prominent at the Park, Tony Rocco and his Art Foundation, doing a lot of instruction for kids and exhibits and like at Park. The College for Creative Studies, very prestigious organization, opened their first satellite operation in 115 years that they've existed in Detroit, and we are very, very pleased to have them as a very prominent tenant. Simple Kitchen, as an example, some of them are doing culinary arts. We've got two culinary arts programs going on there, lots of activity, about 30 hours a week of culinary arts, and kids just having a great time, and I can't believe the number of kids taking cooking classes, including two of my grandkids. The pool, we just, it's in the process of a major overhaul, all new equipment underground, all new resurfacing of the pool itself. Right now, it's completely drained. Tomorrow, we start putting water back in, and we'll be open for swimming in again next week. We have over 700 active users of the pool right now, and this is the only indoor pool that we have in the community that's open to the public. That pool goes away, these kids have nowhere to go. And it's for adults, too. We have senior programs, water aerobics, infants, a lot of instruction, full complement of activities in the pool. Gymnasium, I wish you had about three of them. It's occupied, used seven days a week for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, futsal, and a whole variety of activities. Now, I want to just briefly go through and outline maybe the site plan a little bit, so you can get some idea, for those of you that may not be familiar with it, what we got going here. The school exists here, it's been there 100 years, the main building here, the auditorium, the pool, some warehouse space over here, arts wing, and all the classrooms and the like throughout the facility. This is Main Street, this is Church Street, this is Adams, this is Farmer, here's the cultural center, here's the football stadium, which is used by the Plymouth Canton Steelers and Our Lady of Good Counsel, primarily, and others. The running track, Miracle League, so you kind of get your bearings. The tennis courts are here, there are six now, we would lose three tennis courts. This is the location for the new theater that we are proposing for the site. Lots of parking, about 750 parking spots and more, two entrances and exits here, one off of Farmer, one off of Theodore, two off of Adams, and one off of Main Street. So we've got three entrances and exits proposed for the project. The layout really kind of gives you a campus feeling, for those of you that spend time out there. We put that theater located in the center with all the things around it. We're very fortunate, we'll have a 22-acre complex right... We're very fortunate, we'll have a 22-acre complex right downtown with walking distance, probably 15 restaurants, right in the heart of the community. Now, this is a little bit of a bird's eye view of, of the site. So here we have the school, the old school. Here's the tennis courts, Adams along here, Farmer over here. This is the way the theater would probably be positioned on the site with parking and, certainly, traffic flow through for the school here and through for the theater there, with plenty of flow through, throughout the site. So what are going to be the benefits? We've got studies done, done our own, we've done professional studies. And according to Anderson Economic Group, and these folks are top-notch, they're probably the best in, in the Midwest at doing these kind of studies. And their results were the proposed renovations and a performing arts theater at Park will bring numerous long-term benefits to the Plymouth community, including quality of life and economic benefits. And I got a report about like that with all the backup data that they used to come to that conclusion. Some of the other economic benefits, it will definitely bring more customers and more business to the downtown area with that theater in place. Now, maybe that's good, maybe it's bad, depending on your opinion. But it will really, I think, foster a lot of activity in the community. And I think one of the things we've got to think about as time goes on, and, you know, the Amazons of the world take over a lot of the shopping, what's going to happen to our shopping downtown? If we can bring more people into our downtown to support those shopping areas, support the restaurants, you know, in my opinion, that's a good thing. The businesses will spend more money to come here. We've got a lot of activity, got the Five Mile Quarter and others that I think that a township could really benefit. But these high-tech companies, their employees want these kind of amenities. You're trying to recruit them from, from Silicon Valley to come to Michigan in the dead of winter. You know, we need everything we can get to, to recruit those kind of folks to, you know, a lot of these people coming here making $100,000 a year, coming in to work for those companies. They expect these kinds of activities. And they bring high-quality workers. And, and with that kind of pressure for housing, for high income, it will invariably will drive up property values as well. So the ongoing financial outlook for Park is really very strong. And the, we had contracted with Stout, Riesius, and Ross, who are very good at doing these kinds of business cases. And they, their conclusion was the study of the business operations of the project indicates their future operation is feasible, and that Park has created a competitive advantage over simple, similar properties by simply renting out the facilities to users. The thing that's different about Park from Levonia, Canton, wherever you want to talk about, we rent space to tenants who pay us rent. They do their own marketing, they hire their own people. We are a landlord. Now, we are fortunate in that we've gotten a broad mix from fitness to dance to theater to music, pottery, visual arts activities that have come in here. But everybody is on their own. We'll do a little work for them on the website or something, but that's in on Facebook. But they're on their own. We don't need staff. We don't hire people to run programs. We have a very, very small skeleton staff, because that's all we need to do what we, what we're operating. We do run the pool, and, but we do feel we need to run our own swim program, but that's it. Everybody else is on their own. One other thing I think is interesting, too, what sets us apart from these other organizations? We just added up for the year, 60% of our revenue, 60% of our revenue comes from tenants that have their offices in our facility. So we don't have the huge ups and downs. I mean, they do their own renovation, they put money into their space, they move in, that's their home, they're paying rent. And we've had, we've been fortunate that we've had very, very good results with our tenants, and we keep adding more every day. But that is a key number. That 60% of our revenue, Canton doesn't have that, Levonia doesn't have it, none of these other facilities have that. That is a huge difference, and it's what makes the economic model work. Another key difference is that, according to the experts, day-to-day operations by a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable organization with a business mindset approach like Park, as opposed to a government-run operation, sorry, guys, is essential to achieving ongoing breakeven or better financial results and avoid the ongoing losses and taxpayer subsidies associated with traditional community centers. We have lower operating costs, we don't provide healthcare, we don't have retirement plans, and as a 501(c)(3), typically, you don't provide those kinds of things. And we have the ability to fundraise. As a nonprofit, we can have fundraising events, try to hold a fundraising event for Plymouth Township to fund whatever, right? It isn't going to work. 501(c)(3)'s, you can do that. So we need 30 million to really achieve what I think the project is capable of, and that's 78 million to, to renovate the existing facility. We have a lot of site work to do, land, utilities, parking, stormwater, landscaping and the like, that's going to be about another $8 million. Performing Arts Center would be 13 to 14 million dollars, for a total of 30. All money used, that would be raised in a millage or privately, will go to construct and renovate the site. I repeat, all money will go to the site. No money will ever go for operating costs of that facility. We've operated now for two and a half years. I think we know what we're doing. We are convinced that if this project is implemented, that we can operate that without any subsidies from taxpayers to operate that facility. And I'm telling you, that is a first. Show me another community that their community center and art centers and the like can operate without any subsidies. We will do that. We certainly need to modernize the facility. It's a 100-year-old school. We need to address heating and cooling, repair and replace plumbing and electrical. We've got roof sections that need to be fixed. We want to modernize all the restrooms, install new windows. You see what the school can look like. If you drive by it today, I admit, it's kind of ugly. It's, it's not very attractive. They took the windows all out back in about 40 years ago, trying to save energy, and put the little windows in, and it really made a mess of the aesthetics. We want to put all the original windows back in. I think there's 191 windows, but we got a good handle on that, and I think that would really make the facility much more attractive. We need to repurpose what they call the cafeteria. It was a cafeteria, and they kind of used it as a theater. We've been using it as a small theater, but it really needs to be upgraded and made it a proper theater for about 180 to 200 people a night, cushy seats and all the nice things you need. Get rid of the drop ceilings, replace the light fixtures with LED, improve the handicap access and security, update the pool and the gymnasium, and really improve the rear entry into the building. It's not very attractive, and we'd really like to fix that up as part of this project as well. And then we got infrastructure issues. We got to deal with stormwater, and we got some unique ideas regarding that, because we got to do utilities, we got landscaping, traffic flow, parking, and really, the rear of the lot will look something like this. Uh, we're out a little further. Go, go forward. There, that's the rear of the building. And then another one, we're on the next slide, we're talking about this, and now you can go to the next one, okay? So this is what the rear, you would be looking at the, you're standing on Farmer, and the cultural center would be off to the left, and you'd be looking up towards the school. If you went straight through, the school would be on the other end. This is not a very attractive piece of real estate right now, with the prison fencing and all the rest of it back there. We'd clean that all up, and I think we can make it very, very attractive in that part of the, of the community. I think that'd be a big, big blessing as well. And the next slide. Completing the vision, we really need a performing arts center, a 400-seat performing arts center, to really make this project work and to really make it attractive and to really attract others in the arts organizations to that community and draw the audience. We really need to do a performing arts center. And why is it 800 seats? We've done a lot of studies on this, and a lot of others have done studies. For our community, it is the proper size. And anybody wants to sit down and go through it with me, we'll show you why. 800 seats for this community is the right size. 1,200 like Dearborn's got is too big. 400 seats like Canton, like Canton's got at the Village Theater is too small. It's, the Village Theater is, is too big for some of the smaller groups, and it's too small for larger groups, it's kind of never, never land. So really, the 800 seats are the, are the right, right-sized facility. Went out, polled virtually every arts and performance organization in southeastern Michigan. It got 165 days of what people have committed. DSO says it will take seven days, Michigan Opera Theater said it will take five, you know, Detroit Chamber Winds and Strings, they'll take a certain number. So, and we have Plymouth Canton Community Schools, need some capacity. They've tried twice to build a new performing arts center and couldn't get it done. We have three high schools over there and one auditorium. And it's not available to the rest of the community because they, they have it tied up. Levonia just built three new performing arts centers at each one of their high schools. They're in the process of doing it right now. We have one for 7,500 kids, or 6,400 kids on that high school campus, 17,000 kids in our school district, and we got one performing arts center in, at the high school campus. So there is a need there. School Craft College has a need, commitments from them, and many, many others. They've got a whole list of people that are ready to go in this theater. Last thing I wanted to do is end up building that theater and not have anybody come to the party. They will come. We need probably 100, at most 125 to get to a breakeven on it. I have no problem. I know I got them, and, you know, we can lock that up. The, you know, why do we want to spend that kind of money? Half the project goes on the performing arts center. But it really is important to the success, the ongoing financial performance of the total complex. It's, and it significantly expands and elevates the scope and quality of the arts and entertainment offerings, making the complex superior to anything in this area. Show me a complex like this, anywhere, located downtown, 16, 17, 20 acres, including the, the ice arena, that is located there, that is in a demographic like we have, with access between Detroit, Ann Arbor, north, northern suburbs and, and the southern suburbs. It really is a tremendous asset to have it located where it is and in this community. Detroit Symphony Orchestra, Ann Parsons is the president and CEO. The DSO is excited about the new Park Theater in Plymouth and looks forward to any future opportunities to perform there. They currently do four concerts a year in churches. They hate churches. But this is the hottest market they've got outside Detroit. They've served seven communities. This Plymouth is by far the strongest community. They are anxious to get in here and run a whole series, maybe seven full concert series at this performing arts center. They want to know if they can book, they'd set out in 2020. Michigan Opera Theater is coming in, Michigan Motor City Brass Band, and many others. This is what the theater might look like. This is artist's rendering. Obviously, there's no designs done, but this is probably reasonably close to what it would be looking like when we come to final analysis. So how do we fund it? Two things. First step, and this is what we've been working on for some time, to raise as much private capital through pledges and donations from individuals, foundations, and businesses as we possibly can. And then, we never really expected to be able to raise an entire $30 million in this community for this project. And then, we, we knew we were going to have to go for a millage at some point, but we're going to try to raise as much money as we can in private funds. Currently, on the next page. Private donations and pledges presently total about $6 million. With the possible exception of major church projects, we believe this is a record high for Plymouth. As shown on the chart below, if there were no additional private donations, we estimate the public funding requirement would be about 3/4 of a mil, equal to about $95 per year or about $8 a month for the average township homeowner. Additional donations between now and millage time could reduce the cost, as shown below. Right now, in the first column, we have 8 million, or 6 million in private, moves over to eight, in order to 10. If we could raise $10 million, you see the reduction in the millage and the cost per average homeowner. Now, the average home is worth about $300, $304,000. The taxable rate is varies depending, because of the Headley Amendment, if you paid $300,000 for your house yesterday, you're going to get taxed at 300. If you paid it some time ago, years ago, it'll be something less, it might be 250,000 taxable value. So this is kind of a mix of all the various fund. So the average is going to be about $8 a month or $95 a year. Next slide. At 75, or .75 mil, 3/4 of a mil, $95 per average homeowner, a millage for Park would be about half or less than the 2017 millage rates for School Craft College and the library. School Craft College, we, we get taxed about 1.8 mil, and the library, love the library, but we're at 1.46. We're asking for half of what we pay for operating the library, just operate. Half of what we pay to operate the light, to build the entire complex, to build a performing arts center, to, to do all the renovations to the school and to the entire site. I think that's a pretty good return on investment, and we don't have any operating costs that we have to fund in the future going forward. So we believe that the gain in property value realized by the average homeowner from Park will be meaningful more than the tax cost. It is going to be about 1/2 of 1%. If your property value goes up about 1/2 or 1% because of all the influences, more people coming in, more demand, amenities that we have, if it raised your property value 1/2 of 1%, it would, you would pay for this project over time. And I, again, I think that is very, very conservative. All the experts will tell you it'd be a lot more. In order to let the voters decide, we really need to be able to come together between the township and the city. This cannot be a city project, it can't be a township project, and it can't be a private project either. We really need to come together. In order to let the voters decide if they support Park or not, we are recommending a joint township and city ownership and governance plan to be negotiated with Park and with the Malcoms, who are the, the prospective owners of this property. And there are plenty of examples up there of joint agreements in other communities that can be used as any, as a starting framework here. If voters approve Park's plan, the existing building and property and donor contributions will all be donated to the township and the city. Everything donated in, millions of dollars worth of property donations and the like, private funding will go into this, donated to be gone forever, no way of ever retrieving that. To approve a millage to fund Park's capital plan, a majority of voters in both the township and the city would have to approve it. So the voters will decide this, and it will take the majority in the city and the majority in the township. If we don't get both, the project goes down. Timing. The earliest possible community vote is really needed here. The early would be August at, at primary time. President and prospective tenants who need to plan for the future at Park if the millage is approved, or elsewhere if the millage fails, and the site potentially gets vacated for sale, demolition, or development. You can imagine people deciding to pull up stakes where they're at and coming in there. Right now, with all the talk and the millage and all the rest of it, it's a bit uncertain. So it's a little tough to, to recruit people in there right now while all this is going on. Benefactors. We've got people who have been generously funding near-term repairs and fixes to the old building. I'll tell you what, they come over there once for a day and see what it takes to keep a 100-year-old building going, day in and day out, in the cold seat and the hot, Dan sitting over there, he can tell you all about it. We live and die in that place every day, just patching it together. So that cannot go on. Major users who need to plan for 2019 and beyond. DIA was in this week with a comprehensive plan. They, they've been out doing some things with us. You may have seen the Inside Out program last summer. They are all excited about coming into Park and doing this, but they're coming in with plans, they don't even kick in till the fourth quarter and are out into 2019 and 2020. We need to get some certainty in what we're doing to really let these plans come together and really solidify. We've got foundations and granters that are, you know, would like to give money to a certain project, but they want to know the place is going to be here and, and that we're going to have the funding for. So some of that is now starting to get held up until we can get good answers on, on that. Next slide is on, summary on a timeline. August would be the best time for us, sooner the better, for all the reasons I just want to. And, and we're willing, you know, under the circumstances, we're willing to compromise, I guess, on this and move it to November, if that's what we have to do. We'd really like to keep it in August, but, you know, there's certain people that say, look, if we're going to do a millage vote, then it ought to be when we have the most voters out, out to vote. And we've been, you know, all along saying, we need to let the voters decide. So I guess I understand the argument, doing it in, at a primary in August, you know, we don't get huge voter turnouts for primaries, so, you know, maybe we've got a minority that would be dictating to the majority. So. So we're willing to move this out to November. You know, my preference obviously would be August, but you know, we'll concede the point. And then, if we do that, whether it's either August or November, you see the time plans there. We need to really engage with the city to get the process going. And you know, by June 15th, we really got to have the plan together with the city and millage filing proposal in August and a millage vote in November if we take the November route. This is, I guess, one of my favorite slides. Why Park and why in Plymouth? Of all the places, this could be why in Plymouth. I think we've demonstrated a real demand for arts and recreation complex like we have. We're 85% occupied. We've got all the tenants we had. There's no question there's a huge demand. There is really a lack of mid-sized performance space in the area. There's not a theater the size within 20 miles. Just think about where it is. It's a long haul. And we have ideal location midpoint between Detroit and Ann Arbor, between the northern suburbs and the southern suburbs, all the ideal amenities in downtown Plymouth, very attractive demographics. We spend 150% of what everybody else in the state of Michigan on average spends on arts and recreation in this community. We have very good freeway access and we'll have very generous parking as well on the site, something that we don't have much of in this community. All right, getting to the end of it. This is a public project subsidized and managed by the private sector. The present planned community-based activities provided at Park are almost always provided by local government or not at all. We believe this is true for Plymouth surrounding communities as well. When provided fully by government, projects such as this include the full construction costs plus ongoing annual operating losses. With the unique private-public partnership being proposed, the cost to taxpayers will be limited to 80% or less, if we can raise more private money in the meantime, of construction costs with no annual operating costs. Because there is no profit possibility from this type of project, it is not reasonable to expect full private funding. However, by working together as proposed, the average township taxpayer can anticipate hard benefits and increased property value that should well exceed a relatively modest increase in property taxes, plus cultural, recreational and recreational quality of life opportunities for ourselves, our children, our grandchildren and future generations. We're not asking the board to approve the project or vote for a tax increase. What we're asking you to do is to give the voters a chance to make the decision on this. You may all have your own opinions. What I would hope is that we say, you know, this is a big enough project. It has a big enough potential impact on our community. I'm willing to let the voters decide. But that means we got to go to the next step, team up with the city before we can go out and let the voters decide on the project. And let me tell you, if the voters decide they don't want it, I'll walk away from it in a minute. We've put a lot of work and a lot of effort into this because I felt we needed to secure the property, we needed to make design proposals, we had to do the market studies, we had to do the business case, we had to thoroughly analyze that. Until we did that, it would not be fair to come to you and ask you for a tax increase, a tax millage to fund a project that wasn't well thought out, that was well worked through with concrete proposals. I believe we're at that point now and I'd ask the board to consider working with the city, to engage with the city, to put this project together so that we can go to the voters at the earliest possible time to support the project. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Okay. Questions from the board? You want to go around the table?
The tentative $30 million budget is now really reduced, the amount of money raised through a tax would be 26 million at present status?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Because of the private contributions?
Right.
And that's where... That's how you get the .75 mils?
Oh, sorry.
The .75 mils is calculated assuming you need to raise 26 million?
24 million.
24 million?
Right. Because we have six and we need total of 30. Now, I got to tell you, we are, we are working on some things and I would hope they come through. But I would like to get a little more certainly on where this is going. I mean, we had a meeting today with the foundation, but they're a little iffy on this thing because is it even going to go for a vote? Is there going to be a millage? The uncertainty in this is making it difficult right now. If we can start moving this process along, that will free up some of that as well.
Which means a lot of talks with the city of Plymouth and lawyers to structure the agreement, which is only for this, I need to clarify, only for this project, not other recreation? Kurt, maybe you can help me with that?
Well, let's let Don answer. I know the answer, I'm going to see what Don knows.
Sure. I mean, I would not want to open this up to a whole bunch of other stuff, all right? I think if we're going to ask the voters to pass something, they need to know exactly what they're getting. I think with Park, we know that. The authority or whatever mechanism we might use, I think like the authority is the best way to go, would own all the property. So Park would not own the property. The authority would then enter into an operating agreement or a concession agreement, concessionary agreement with Park to operate it. It would be like the city and the township had property and they hired someone to operate it for them. We would operate it. On top of that, we would take over total responsibility for operating costs of that facility and the profit and loss of that facility. So the authority, which would own all the buildings, which would have been all the money and the land and everything would have been donated to this authority. They now own that property, they can levy the tax and they can pay the bondholders. That's about the extent of it. They have an operating agreement with Park to operate this facility and we take total financial responsibility for it.
Don, you've provided us with on January 18th, that's the last draft that I have. It's a January 18th draft. I don't know if there's any new ones out there. This is really a, from a legal perspective, there's three separate governing documents here. The first one, and this is as much a question as it is a statement, is the Articles of Incorporation for the Plymouth Area Recreational Authority. Now, this is an authority, it's a recreational authority, but it's in accordance with the Recreational Authorities Act of 2000 PA 321, blah, blah, blah. I've done some research on this and it really is an authority, this is not a recreation authority that covers all of Plymouth Township and all of Plymouth City. It is limited to the footprint, the four corners of Park.
Right.
Central Middle School and the proposed theater. So I want to make that clear.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, and this has been used in other areas of the state?
It has.
You know, I've pulled up a couple articles on it. I don't know how successful it's been. I get the sense that this was created for somebody in Grand Rapids. It kind of jumps out at me.
Yeah, they kind of slipped in on the documents. You saw Grand Rapids reference on occasion. Yep.
So I think there's some rich folks out there who maybe wanted to build a recreation center and use some money for that. I get that. Now, there's a board of this authority.
Right.
The city would have two members and we would have five. That has not changed.
That has not changed because that was nothing but a suggestion on our part on how we might structure it. The authority, which will own all the property and levy the tax, it will have a board of directors. That board of directors could be elected at large from the public, might have seven, nine members, whatever. They could all be elected. They could all be appointed, some by the township, some by the city. That ratio needs to be, both sides need to agree to. Or it could be a combination. Some are appointed, some are elected. Frankly, we don't care. At Park, we don't care. And that's really something I think has to be worked out between the city and the township, whatever they are comfortable with. And I've had strong opinions, some think it ought to be appointed because you have a little more control, others think it ought to be elected at large, but I think that is one of the key discussions that the city and the township needs to have.
So the para-authority is a governmental unit. It becomes a governmental unit. It has, you know, it has to maintain insurance. It would probably have to be insured by the MMRMA. It would have, you know, it can sue and be sued, it can bond, it can do what, it has all the rights and responsibilities of government. It does have the authority to tax. The authority would be able to tax not more than one mil for not more than 20 years.
Right.
On the taxable property within the city and the township. Then, assuming that this is created, this then, this authority becomes the legal vehicle to obtain a millage.
That it is.
Okay? Then, the authority has to be created though before the millage. So the authority, if the millage doesn't pass, the authority really is, it exists, but it exists on paper. Not the first time that that's happened, by the way. We've had building authorities and others that have existed and have gone away and other authorities that are dormant. So once the authority is created, and let's assume that the millage passes, then the second legal document is the bylaws of the authority. So this would govern the internal affairs of the authority. So they'd have to agree to that. Then, the authority would essentially hire you or Park to run these operations.
Right.
Okay. And obviously, these would have to be worked out with the city.
For sure. We have proposed that from our attorneys as a starting point, a framework that we might be able to work from. Obviously, virtually all our documents except for the operating agreement don't even involve us directly technically. It's really how the city and the township work together. We proposed that as a starting point for discussion, but then it really falls in the city and township's hands to work out those details.
So it really becomes a city within a city?
Yes, it does.
It's kind of like the DDA or the Tifa where it's...
Like the library?
Or like the library authority, yeah. So it would be, it would be in that kind of context, but still limited to the four corners of Park. It would not be able to fund any other operations?
Nope.
Golf courses?
Nope.
Senior centers?
Nope.
Ice rinks? Soccer fields? Okay. Bob?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a couple comments if I may. So a lot of you know that I was one of the people that helped put this together and I served on the board until middle of 2016. I absolutely agree and support the fact that it ought to be up to the voters. One of the things that I find both really, really, it was amazing to watch the good people of this community come together and give of themselves. We had the Malcoms, the Sunnens. They get nothing in return. And so it was just so cool to watch this come together and watch all these volunteers come together and all these people do something because they believe that it's the right thing for the community. So regardless of how you come out on this, some people agree with this, some don't. What I have found disappointing particularly recently is when disparaging comments are made about individuals that are involved in this, in this project. There's been grassy knoll theories, accusations of profiteering. It is absolute nonsense. And even if you don't agree with this project, I think everyone in this room should applaud what these folks have done, tried to do for this community.
I guess the line goes lines. I just want to emphasize, no one involved with Park can gain financially. The Malcoms are willing to donate the property to this project, donate it. My family and others are willing to donate generously to this project as well. We will never gain anything. I've spent four years on this. I've never taken a penny out, I've done nothing but put money in to fix things and the like. Never will. None of us will ever take anything out. Our board, including Mark and myself, will never take any kind of compensation, not now, not ever into the future. None of us has ever drawn a salary, we never will. We are doing this strictly as I said, up to this point. We spent a lot of money to get it to this point, but it was to get it to this point so all of you would have an opportunity to vote on this. This is not up to us. We're not developing this. We don't ever get anything out of it. We just have a love for this community and saw what we thought was a tremendous opportunity for this community. And we felt we owed it to this community and the voters to be able to weigh in on this and decide. If you say, we're not interested, bullows it down or develop it or whatever would happen to it if we don't do this, I'll accept that. I will accept without a fight what the voters decide when we go to this. But I want to make sure they're making an informed decision too. And we had to do all the work we've done the last three years just so you could make an informed decision. We got to be able to put this out, we got to be able to put out the business case, the market studies, the proposed designs, the impact positive and negative on the community. But now, we're at that point, I want the board and the city commission to come together to give you a chance to weigh in on what you want done. Okay?
Any other questions from the board?
Well, are we going to be, this is going to be a lot of work to work out the documents and to negotiate with the city of Plymouth. How are we going to make that happen if we decide to move forward on getting an initial framework?
Well, we need to find out what the intentions of the city are. I'm not, I mean, you've met with them already in similar format.
We've been meeting with them, they're ready to meet. So, you know, I think I want to have the same type of presentation, or we will probably in a week or two, to the city commission and then I would think we start getting together and start sketching it out. I mean, we'll be happy to participate in it. I mean, I've been working with both parties for a number of years, as have Mark and Steve Ward here, our financial guy. And we're willing to be, and we need to be a part of that. If we're going to donate, if Mark's going to donate all the property, he's got some conditions on it too, about what they can do with it. And you know, there's going to be certain things. So we need to sit around table and go to work on it. We'll figure it out.
Well, I support November since it gives it a more open, fair review by voters. Typically, I expect that there's going to be some other taxing authorities looking for money at the same time, so the voters may have to rank order things. But that being the case, if we have a consensus that November's the date, we still don't have a lot of time if you want to negotiate this. And you know, we need to remember, there's some lessons learned. We have at least two authorities in this community who, in my opinion, have not lived up to their accountability and respect for voters. So there's some lessons learned there that we have to work into this. The other item I have is what happens if the Park concessionaire can't handle it or in five years or 10 years goes away? You got to have something, you know, who's, some type of relief valve for who's going to run it if they walk away? So those are just things, some things to think about.
I agree. Park is a nonprofit public corporation. You're sort of the driving force behind it now, but as we just heard from the actuaries, you know, we're not, no one's going to be here forever. And...
Really? I was counting on it.
I think Park, I think Park is going to have to have, to make this work, you've got to have some kind of a solid organizational structure with a continuity plan.
We do.
And a board of directors who are accountable and, you know, we know who they are and we can get to them, you know, because I don't want to turn this into a golf course situation where I've got an operator that can't make, you know, can't make a go of it.
Well, I think, you know, you need to have a look at current operating activity of P&L we have now. And you could, it's pretty easy to make the projection. You put later theater in on that, we pretty much know where we are. We're not starting from square one. We've got a good solid basis. And like I say, when 60% of your revenue comes from tenants that reside in the building that nobody else has got, I'll tell you what, that answers a whole lot of questions for me. I would not have touched this project if it weren't for that. I was involved with the Village Theater down in Canton. And you know, that whole project changed throughout the process. I led that project for three years, but then they decided to go to 400 seats, which was going to be really tough. They wanted to put it down in the Cherry Hill Village and they wanted Kent Township to operate it. And I withdrew from the process after three years. Scared the devil out of me of what was going to happen under that scenario. We have solved all of those. We got the proper location, we got the proper size and we've got it in a, right in the downtown and the heart of it. downtown, in the heart of it, and we're a 501(c)(3). If the city wanted to run it, or the township were going to run it, I wouldn't touch it. The cost for the government to operate a facility like this just gets totally out of sight.
So, Don, one of the things that people have, I've heard some of the people out in the community ask is that, why are the two projects, you know, tied together, the renovation and the theater? What's the reason for that?
Well, for one thing, the school itself is kind of right on the edge. The reason the theater makes a lot of sense, we already have all the property. We're already going to have all the infrastructure. We already have the basic staff that operates that day in and day out. Okay, we've got to add a little more on the marketing side. We need a box office, ticket office. You charge two bucks a ticket for a ticket, and that becomes self-funded. Need some custodial help. The maintenance guy we have today can handle one more building, particularly if we renovate the one we got. So our incremental operating costs, and I'll sit down and show those to you, are just minimal compared to what a standalone facility would have to do. And that's a problem we had with the Village Theater. We wanted to put it on Ford Road. Well, first, we wanted to put it with the school, and they didn't want to add it to the third high school for all bright reasons. But anyway, we were going to put it on Ford Road. But the property was $433,000 an acre in 1998, and we needed 11 acres. Killed the whole project. We already have the property, so we don't have to worry about the property. All the utilities and everything else that's going to go into that, we already have. So the construction, that's a, it's not a $14,000 performing arts center, it's a $25,000 performing arts center. If you had to go buy the property, do all the things, the parking, all the street work that you would have to do. So we have a huge advantage. And by only having to pay 13, 14 million dollars for that project, and already having your staff in place, we're going to have one executive director run an old complex. So you share the personnel between the facilities. That's why the numbers really work.
So you leverage your resources across both facilities? So, something you said there...
I confused you there.
Something in your, sorry, I was traveling on business today, so I'm a little tired. Something you said in your presentation about donation of the property, and I think you might have said it was, it's kind of a one-way street, right?
It is. Once it's gone, it's gone.
So, once it's donated, there's no way, somebody can't get mad and take their ball and go home. It's donated.
No, no, you can't. And that goes for any of the money donated, anything else that gets donated. Once it's in there, it's there. Can't get it back.
And it is donated to the recreation, the PRA, which is the Recreation Authority under PA whatever. Okay? So that...
Basically, I mean, you've got to think about what's being said here. Basically, you have philanthropists in the community that have given thousands of hours and millions of dollars, and they're saying, "Here, we will give you this property, but we just need a little bit of help to, you know, to take it to the next level."
So these are pledges contingent upon the passage of the millage? So somebody says, "I'm going to give you $100,000 tomorrow." They say, "I'm committing to that." But they make, they wait till the millage is approved to transfer the money?
Yes.
To the PRA.
And what we have, it's a pledge. They don't get the money now, but it's a pledge, and we're allowing them to give that money in three increments, 18, 19, and 20, because that's when we would need the money to complete the project. So, we're making it a little bit easier. If they pledge a million dollars, it's only $330,000 a year for three years, so.
Sounds better.
All right.
And the PRA, once it's created under state law, does have the ability to accept grants, apply for grants, just like any other governmental entity.
Absolutely.
So that would include a donation. I mean, I don't, I've been through this before. We, in 2005, we created the Watershed Alliance Act, which was basically an authority to assist communities in environmental and stormwater obligations. So this is, I've heard this before, and it has worked before. I'd love to see what, how it's worked in some of these other communities. So, I mean, I'd like to do a little bit more due diligence on that. I don't mind board, I mean, I don't mind talking to the mayor of Plymouth to see what their intentions are. I don't mind an authority where I've got five votes, so that's...
They have not agreed to that. That was a proposal...
I like that.
That I felt you may need in order, because, you know, the township's going to provide the bulk of the money, so. And I'm not saying they haven't agreed to anything.
And I can see the argument. I mean, the township's going to, would provide the bulk of the money, but the city's going to say, "Yeah, but it's in our backyard, so we don't want you to wreck it." You know, "We don't want an eyesore here in our community."
I trust we can work through that.
And I know that regular, traditional recreation authorities, which would encompass the four corners of both communities, and that money could be used for various projects other than Park, typically, I believe, requires an elected recreation board, similar to what we have for the library.
I don't know.
This would not be an elected board. It would be an appointed board, similar to our Tifa or our DDA. But it could be...
It could be. It could be either. It could be either. At least our attorneys say it could be either, or it could be a combination, where some are appointed and some are elected. Whatever makes it work.
Be interesting to see, Bob, if it could transition from an appointed to an elected board after a couple of years.
I think that would be ideal.
So that...
From appointed to elected?
Yeah.
Yeah, you...
No, 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 no. So that you would, they would be appointed for a period of years, let's say four years, and then, they could, there would be an election where seven new people would be elected, or they could run for...
I want, my feeling is I want to retain much more close control because of past experiences. When you have elected boards, they become an entity on their own, and I think that you need to keep control. The other thing is, I don't want to have the authority be able to tax any more than what was voted. In other words, the one mill, you have the .25 gap, can you close that? So it just is what it is, and done?
Well, the law says you can levy up to one mill. So, my experience would be if you want to go beyond, if you want to somehow close that gap between .6 and one mill, you'd have to go back to the voters.
Yeah.
Because with any, because with any millage...
Say, "Close the gap."
Well, you just, you...
I don't want them to have the ability to ask for any more money.
Um...
Can you do that? I don't know. I'm not smart enough.
I don't think so. I think what the law says right now, the way I read it, is you can levy up to one mill for a period of 20 years. So, I think 20 years might be too long. I like millages that sunset after a while.
But you've got to pay the bonds back.
It sunsets at 20 years because that's when the bond's paid off, and there's no further obligation. The sole purpose, little internal operating funds, fine. But to, is to fund the bond. That's it. And it sunsets at 20 years when the bond's paid off.
So Chuck, to your point, I think it's a discussion, a fundamental discussion about what would be the role of the township? Would the township have an oversight or governance of some sort? Or is the township, it's a philosophical question. Would you prefer it just, it's completely hands-off, and it has no entanglements? And I think you might get some differences of opinion. I'm not sure.
When you do hands-off, it becomes an independent entity that becomes sometimes not considerate of taxpayers and accountability. And they offer bloated staffs with defined benefit pensions and other things that don't... If they can get the number of people elected every time at large, it's a lot easier to get what you want. That's just been my observation.
Yeah. I believe. I can't swear by it. But I think we could put a limit, let's say it's .75, we can set the limit up for that. Even though the statute allows you to go to one full mill, I don't think we have to give them the authority to go to one point.
I agree.
Okay? So we can limit. If we say it's .75, they can't raise it to one. And they can't do anything else with the money. We can make this very, very restrictive, as I understand it.
We've got to do a lot of, if we proceed with this to the next step, got to do a lot of talking and a lot of consulting with lawyers. But there again, do we have the money to pay for that? If we have a $25,000 legal bill or something? So we've got to think about that.
Jared?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Chuck is saying. I, of course, have a philosophical problem with any type of taxing millage taking place other than a general election. I have historically, over my past 30 years of being in the public, of combating stealth elections, you know? I even sued the school district 20 years ago because of a stealth election on February the 22nd on a Saturday, which was designed for a particular outcome. So, I have a philosophical problem with that. The other things we can, I'll talk about, and Chuck does bring up some good ideas. But I would be an absolute no vote for anything other than a general election, because that's when the greatest number of the electorate would have an opportunity to voice their opinion on it. So that's my position there.
So that's November?
It has to be a general election, November.
Well, by the time you got through with me, you had me convinced. No, and really, philosophically, we have to agree with that. We're going out and saying, "We want the voters to decide on this." Then we need to go at a time when we can get the largest voter turnout so that they can weigh in on this. I have to agree with that.
You know, being true to that word, it's up to the voters to decide, and, you know, absolutely.
We can't be perceived as trying to slip it through or something. I don't want that. So, we're convinced.
Jack?
Yes. There was reference made to documents, three documents. You went over that, Mr. Supervisor, prepared on January 18th, and been a lot of discussion about statutes and legal matters. I need to inform you all that I will have to recuse myself from any decisional activity here, even from participating in discussions, because those documents were prepared by the law firm with which I'm associated. And therefore, I believe, and I've received advice, that I need to avoid any conflict of interest, whether that's an actual or potential. So I would have to recuse myself. And if we have a vote, I would, I guess, under the Charter of Township Act, Mr. Bennett, I would probably then have to ask you to permit me not to vote.
Actually, it would be the board itself that would have to vote to allow you to recuse yourself.
Exactly. I said that backwards perhaps, but that would be my situation. So I would not be participating.
So you're a partner in the firm, correct?
I'm affiliated with Dickinson Wright. Dickinson Wright prepared the PRA documents on behalf of PRC. So I couldn't sit here really and be effectively affiliated with a counsel or advisor and then turn around and make a decision. I think that's a fundamental ethical issue and a conflict of interest. And both from a standpoint of the code of professional responsibility and then our ethics ordinance, I don't think that would be appropriate. So I would want to recuse myself. And that's why I haven't asked any questions or participated.
Are you talking about voting on whether they even put this on the ballot?
Yes.
I, we're going to have to have a discussion about that, because all these are copied documents.
Yeah, I don't want to get into this whole thing tonight, and Jack, you and I have discussed this in the past. I believe, and we're going to end up with four lawyers with four opinions here tonight, maybe five. But, I mean, I believe, Jack, I think you have fulfilled your professional obligation by notifying us. I think it is now up to us and/or the attorney to decide whether or not we believe that that constitutes a legitimate conflict of interest. I think you're totally being above board and completely ethical about it, but I don't see a conflict. I don't see how you are, you know, personally benefiting from this. I think, and Dickinson Wright Law Firm is not a four-man law firm. I mean, there's a lot of people in that firm, and you are of counsel to that firm, which is a different type of, I assume you're of counsel. I believe you are.
Yes. And I did not participate in preparation of these documents.
No, no, you did not. And that is a, being of counsel to a firm is a different type of employment relationship that you have with a major law firm. So there's a lot of different variables. I don't want to get into the deep weeds tonight. But I personally don't believe that there's a conflict.
And the only reason we end up with Dickinson Wright, I use them for my business, they've been my legal firm, they've done a lot of work with me on the private side, and nothing to do with Jack. And I'm not even sure he even knows the people who've worked on it. I mean, the lawyers have worked, he doesn't, that no one. So, you know, whatever, but that's beyond my pay grade.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Heitman, you've been very silent.
No, I've...
I don't want to put you on the spot.
I have a concern with the authority. We've talked about it. I want to sit down and talk to the city and basically say, this is, you know, I'd love five to two, or five, you know, having a majority on this commission. I'm not sure the city sees it the same way. Let's talk about it before we agree to anything like that. But certainly a concern I have, and I think the city has echoed that same concern to me already, so.
What, they don't like five to two?
Well, they want to make sure that everything's above board going in, and there's nothing, no improprieties, and we echo that. I'm sure we all do.
Don, you had, you had mentioned that the theater would require roughly 120 to 130 events to break even.
A hundred to do it.
Okay, let's just, I mean, this is kind of a bigger question, but, you know, we, you said there's no way where we're going to go back and ask for operational funds. That would probably include the theater. If you find in year five that you're only getting 80, 90 bookings a year, that would obviously put a strain on the financial model, and all of a sudden, you're going, "We're running in the red here." I'm just, I'm trying to be a little creative in my mind and think through how we might put some boundaries, or almost guarantees, to say, "We're never going to go back to ask for operational funding." I don't know if that's realistic or not.
Well, the guarantee is that the authority doesn't have any obligation to do it. I mean, that's a guarantee. They'd say no. You know, I don't know what else to, that's a pretty absolute guarantee.
But then, but then what happens to the park? What happens to the school?
Well, let me tell you about theater. We only showing about $300,000 a year in revenue for that theater, $315,000. That theater is not going to cost us out of pocket if there isn't anybody occupying it. I've got to pay the insurance, I've got to pay the utilities, and that's about it. And I, I'll tell you what, if it got to 50 nights a year, 25 nights a year, it will not bring that project down. Because we don't have any debt service, we're not paying property taxes on it. All we got in the incremental costs are associated with the performances there. I got the staff in place to run that today, the bulk of it. Fine, if you've got a couple of custodians that run it, if you don't have any shows, you let the custodians go. We can do that as a nonprofit. We don't hire these people. I could, in the worst-case scenario, I could ratchet, when we say 100 is a break-even point, yeah, that's with the fixed staff. But we don't have to stick with a fixed staff. I mean, we can pull that thing down to virtually nothing, but not bring the project down.
Most of your costs are going to be variable?
What's that?
Most of your costs are going to be variable?
Almost all. We have almost no fixed costs in that theater.
I still think, though, you have to, there has to be a better way to model that that ensures that it's not going to be an albatross or a white elephant around the neck of the taxpayers.
Let me tell you, Bob, the numbers look really good with the numbers we've got now. The business case for it is better than I'd be willing to sign up for. We're showing operating, just revenue for that theater, 800-seat theater at $315,000. The Village Theater does that. Okay? So I don't think we're stretching here when we're talking about revenue for that theater. We can do a lot better than what the Village Theater's doing with the size of it, the location, all the reasons I gave you earlier. And yet, our revenue number is almost on top of what the Village Theater's doing today.
And the Village Theater is owned and operated by Canton Township?
Yes.
Correct?
With an annual loss of $400,000 to $500,000 a year?
Yeah, $400,000 a year. But here, let me just tell you something. They have $250,000 and some change in revenue. They have $450,000 in payroll. They have total expenses of $650,000 on a 250. They've got 11 people on the payroll at the Village Theater.
So it's kind of like what I was talking about, bloated payrolls, over-benefited.
All right. But that's what, and the pay scale is substantially higher than we would ever think about doing. And they've got benefits, and they've got retirement, and you've got all the costs associated[1791.01] all the costs associated with that. I know that project down there very, very well, and I told you after three years of being involved with, I pulled out, and I could see that coming. And there are those that want to, you know, tag me with the losses down in the Village Theater, let me tell you, when I saw it coming, I was out of there. And we are aware of that, you know, I've run facilities before, some of you know Center Stage, I built and operated that for four years, did very well. And, you know, we did the Penn Theater. Mark has built plants and run operations all over the world, so have I. Steve's been, is a financial guy. You know, we got a little bit of an idea about what it takes to run a business and do our worst-case scenarios, and we're putting a ton of money into this project, that if it failed, it would be down the drain, don't get any of it back. I would not do this if I didn't have the highest degree of confidence that we know what we're doing here. And I'll be welcome to share with anybody why we feel that way.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I would like to open it up for public comments, public questions. Please try to direct them to the board, I mean, Don is not gonna go away, he's not going away.
And while I have a chance, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight.
Well, you've gotta, you've gotta come to the podium and state your name.
Are you going to time-limit it?
I will, I, I mean, the Open Meetings Act allows me three minutes, and I don't want to go there, but I may have to. So, let's start with this gentleman here.
My name is Hayden Kramer, I live at...
Hold the microphone up, to your face.
Hold the microphone up, okay. Hayden Kramer, I live at 1141 Maple Ridge Drive, Plymouth Township. My question, I just wanted to ask one question. What's the current present value of that land?
It was appraised, when the conference passed the action on it, it was appraised at 3.3. There were rumors that there was a more appraisal involved that we never heard about, for a few reasons, but it was appraised at 3.3, I don't know what it was.
Oh, no, I mean, you could do a normal inflation number, but, okay, I mean, that really was the only question I wanted to ask. The other, only comment I would make is, I, you know, raised four wonderful daughters in this community, and have lived here for thirty years now, and it, one of the things that strikes me as I listen to this presentation is that the school, my daughter's a teacher in Detroit, one of them, and the taxing and the loss of the arts, and what it means to have a reason to appreciate what life's all about, or why we do what we do, is tragic. And whether it's the federal government, or the state government, or people that look at education and say that the arts and sports, but dance and theater and writing and poetry and things that make a difference, I would think, I would hope, to why you want to do what you do or how you live your life, it's not to be found in a lot of our educational system anymore. So, you have this incredible thing that's just right here, that, you know, and I don't know any of the details, I don't know these gentlemen at all, and I'm too busy working, and Bob tells me once in a while I should get involved in things.
That'll teach you.
But, you know...
I think I've created a monster.
No, and I'll be, I'll stop after this. I just, I just feel like, listening to my daughter, who struggles, you know, is a thirty-two-year-old woman with a master's, to teach kids that she's their last best hope in life, that their chief struggle is to show that there's, you know, teaching kids to read and appreciate what life's about is what makes a difference, and to have these people say, "We're going to give you this incredible asset, right in the middle of really an extraordinary community that I'm so proud to call my home," and have a structure, legal mumbo jumbo, I'm sure a lot of people are going, "Holy shit," you know. It's difficult to do this kind of thing with a 501(c)(3) corporation. It's not easy. Public-private, you know, public-private partnerships are extremely difficult, and anybody who says, "Okay, you know, after a presentation on the fact that we're completely non-funded, within reason, of a pension liability," you know, it's difficult to say, "Okay, well, then it's 75 cents," but I gotta tell you, I wonder sometimes what the richness of a community is, and there's no, no one gave a thorough description of what it's like to not have things like that here, or what it means to people who want to live in a community that has it, because when you talk about the brain drain, and why kids from Ann Arbor and East Lansing don't stay here, that's why. That's why they go to Atlanta, that's why they go to North Carolina. So, anyway, I think it's incredible what you've done, you know, and beyond that, I didn't know, I didn't come here for this, I want to talk about the golf course, anyway.
All right, well, there'll be time for that later.
Yep.
Hi, I'm John Griffin, I live on 46760 Strathmore. We keep talking about this millage, I was curious, how much tax revenue is three-quarters of a mill for Plymouth Township?
One mill for Plymouth Township is 1.75 million.
Per year?
And I'm gonna need my calculator, 1.75...
Times twenty years?
Times 0.75 equals, it would be 1.32 million.
Times twenty years?
Uh, times twenty years.
So, $20 million?
So, $20 million, I mean, honestly, to build a theater. I just, my personal opinion is, with $20 million, I think there's a lot of other things we could do in this township.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't planning on doing this, but...
I do need your name and address.
I'm sorry, Mary Pine, 45702 Purcell Drive. We've raised five children here, and, I forget what I'm gonna say, I do apologize.
Come back.
I think that you should beware of businessmen bearing a gift of an albatross, which could be a future albatross to you. And I, one comment I would like to make, I just remembered, because I'm very nervous doing this, is, of our five children, we have two who work in Silicon Valley, and this would not draw them in any way, shape, or form. And I think the last gentleman, the first gentleman has a good point, those are all good things about life, and there are lots of ways to do that. The second gentleman had a good point in that you really look at your priorities. I walked into this meeting, and you were talking about having some sort of a problem funding something. I think that was buyer beware. What happens in the future if this doesn't work out, and you are going to cause problems for people? So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Gentleman right here.
Good evening, my name is Fred Bertelli, I live at 13317 Glenmore Court in Plymouth Township. I've got to commend you on your presentation, it was great, nice and rosy. The theater looks beautiful, eight-hundred seats. You've got a facility, a school that's got all kinds of activities proposed or going on over there. You're gonna add eight-hundred people coming into this facility? We got a parking deficit now in the city of Plymouth? If things are gonna be held at the same period of time, at the school and at...
Sir, sir, can you address your comments to the board? This is not a, it's not a confront, anybody here.
If there's gonna be facilities at the school and at the theater going on at the same time, where is he gonna park all these people? He's proposing bringing more businesses in here because of the facilities that are gonna be proposed at here. You know, these high-tech companies that are coming to this area right now have their own facilities, health clubs, swimming pools, you know, this isn't gonna be a draw for them, you know, to bring these people in. It's not gonna, it's not gonna draw them in because of this. What it's gonna draw in more, if it is successful, is more traffic, people looking for places to park, as it is now. You know, from what I understand, the city only has about 9,000 parking spaces, and the majority of those parking spaces now are taken up by employees who work here, and the visitors just drive around and around and around looking for parking space. What is their, how are they gonna fix this problem? They're gonna make paid parking. Come on, let's get real. The city of Dearborn tried that, nobody showed up over there anymore, they took all the parking meters out. The businesses that they, that left aren't coming back. Yeah, they're bringing some more in there, but Dearborn, West Dearborn, East Dearborn is nothing like it was as far as being a vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Amar?
Jim Amar, 96, Jim Amar, 9650 Red Maple Drive. Question for the board is that, will the township be the recipient of any revenue generated by the increased spending in the community as projected by the Anderson Group?
The economic impact study, you mean? Direct payments to the township?
Yeah, according to the presentation, the Anderson Group is saying that things look pretty good, and there'll be a generation of increased spending in the community or in the city and all these businesses, but will the township be the recipient of any revenue of that?
I think you got, I mean, you know, economic impact studies, you gotta look at them with a critical eye, there's no question about it, and I've read through it, you know, I think it's pretty credible, this is my opinion. What it really fundamentally comes down to is that, you know, does that, does that generate enough value in the community that it would have an impact on our housing values? I mean, pick up my house, pick up our houses and move them someplace outside this community?
No, I understand that, but I guess what I, the point I'm getting at is that a lot of the spending with the addition of this concept will be done in the city, and we're gonna be a part of it, I'm just curious if the township will get any revenue from that somehow, other than increase it value of the homes?
And again, I mean, the township coffers? No, of course not. But indirectly, you know, absolutely, it's impact on property values, which therefore, you know, create additional tax revenues, and, you know, success begets success, and so, when you have a vibrant downtown, I mean, look around the state, and look around, look where there's vibrant downtowns, look at what Traverse City did to transform itself over about a decade, was they created an arts community around it, it transformed Traverse City, and the spillover effect on all of the region is, it's, you know, it's indisputable, because success begets success.
Huh? No, no, go ahead.
Oh, okay, no, I'm done.
I was answering Jerry, Jerry had it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, just to add on to that, I think another point a lot of people have made is they've said, "Well, wait a minute," and I've heard this from a number of people, "The township is paying 75% of the bill, and the city is achieving most of the benefit, because there'll be increases to the restaurants, the stores, et cetera." I don't necessarily agree with that, and the major reason is, this is a huge piece of property, and if the city council and the city of Plymouth agrees to this authority, they agree to make it tax-free. That's a huge tax base that they're walking away from in support of this project. So, they are gaining, yes, but they're losing because they're losing that tax revenue.
Okay. Right now, it's not taxable at all, the baseline is, the baseline is not taxed, because it's owned by either the city or the school district, or was.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, thank you very much for...
We took away a lot of your time, so, we yield...
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to come up and answer questions.
All right, all righty. Any other questions from the public? Yes, yes, sir.
Bill Patterson, 9621 Red Pine Drive, Plymouth Township, love this township, heard a lot of insightful things tonight. One thought to Don and the trustees, couple things you should look at. Schoolcraft College privately built their soccer dome, it has corporate sponsors. I would urge that you guys look at how that's working out for them, and I would urge you to seek out more corporate sponsors to help pay for this, and I'll give you an example. We got an awful lot of Ford people live in this community, how about the Ford Foundation to help fund it, just a thought, GM as well.
No, I think, well, I know some of the documents that I have seen do talk about naming rights, and I think that that has been contemplated, and that would be something that, again, if the authority were created, the authority really would have that responsibility to reduce overhead.
I'm wondering if it could help reduce the $30 million cost, too.
Well, that's, again, it's a major if come, I don't know if Don wants to comment on that.
For one thing, we're not exactly an impoverished community, and when you got it a Ford Foundation and some of the major foundations, they are just pumping money into the city of Detroit and other urban areas. Kresge Foundation, talk to them, won't touch us, it's all going to Detroit, so we got that working against us. But after the authority is formed, if they could get, sell naming rights at any time, they can reduce that millage, it'd be a max of 0.75, but if they raise naming rights, seven million dollars, put on that theater with a name, we can reduce that, and we can make them obligated to reduce it, 0.75, 0.6, 0.5, whatever. So, yeah, that doesn't end it, when we do the millage, we can reduce it.
And I would also add that any millage, even one voted on now, is still subject to Headley, so that, so that the Headley Amendment is gonna continue to reduce that millage over time.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? There's a lady in the, hold on, there's a lady in the back, come on, yep.
We can bring the microphone over to you, it might, if it's easier to walk up here.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Chuck. Need your name and address.
Arne, G M O 520 Belunk in City of Plymouth.
Hold the microphone up.
Okay, when this project started two years ago, it was the central middle school and an enhanced green space. Now, it's a theater, eight-hundred-seat theater. If you paid attention to the illustrations, please remember that Farmer and Adams are residential streets, so you can say it's a downtown facility, but it's in a residential area, and I beg you, with full disclosure, I live on Farmer and Belunk, but I beg you to consider that when you approve this theater. Park system and the enhanced green space was one thing two years ago. In my own opinion, I may be the only one in this room, the park theater changes that residential area drastically, so I ask you to consider that.
Okay, thank you. Don, have you made, has Park made any attempt to contact, Sandy? Has Park made any attempt to contact the residents who would live alongside the proposed theater?
Yes, we have, 180 homes that surround Park, we knocked on every door and invited them to a special forum, just for those folks, we conducted that, we had quite a number of people from the neighborhood. We actually made physical contact with about 50%, 90 of the 180 homes that we, and left literature to the other, inviting them to that event. We had that event, I thought it went very well, we listened to all their concerns, obviously, what you're talking about with parking and traffic are things we need to consider, but keep in mind, when we have a football game there, and the Steelers or O L G C is a home game, that's our home field, they got visiting team, we have as many or more cars on that site than we'll have at the theater. We need 275 cars for that theater, we have about 300 parking spots today, we're gonna add a lot more, more than 275, so there'll be more than adequate parking, and with three entrances and exits to that site, they're not coming all out of one site, and they'll figure that out pretty fast, so...
One on Farmer, one on Adams.
Well, there's two on Farmer and two on Adams, there will be two on Adams and two on Farmer, one off Theodore and one off Main Street. Well, that's probably true, that's true. Why? The traffic that we will have for a performance in the theater will not exceed what we have for events that we have today. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to double book things where you might have two huge events simultaneously, we've got to be smart about that a little bit, too. But I don't think it's going to be, it's, it, it won't be more at any time, it will be more frequently. We'll have more events like that, that I will concede. But I don't think the traffic will be any heavier than what we have when we have events today, but they'll happen more times per week than what we have now.
Okay. All right, let's take, Sandy, we have a lady up here with a question.
Geraldine Dial, 14810 Thorn Ridge, Plymouth Township. My question is, if you do the mill, when you state the vote for it, will it state how many years that it is going to be? And are you telling me now that it will be for 20 years?
The way the state law reads, it, you can levy up to one mill. So it's not necessarily a mill. Don has indicated tonight .75, maybe lower. The, the law, though, says for up to 20 years. So I think a lot of that would depend on how much the bond would be to pay for the, primarily for the theater. I'm kind of looking over at, at Don. So I would say no more than 20 years.
Well, I'm 84 years old. And obviously, a senior citizen. And I know that there are a lot of senior citizens that have a lot of concerns with the different proposals of need for money, as we heard tonight about your retirement and so forth. And I just don't know how deep we can dig in our pockets unless we can be assured that it would not be, like he said, approximately $100 a year. You know, I could live with that, but I don't know, you know, if it was to increase or if it was to be for 20 years. Obviously, that's going to be beyond my time. But I still have concern for my community. And I have concern for those younger people who are coming up that may not have the money. I know in a lot of cases, it's the older people that do a lot of supporting of things. And so I appreciate the information that I've been given. I came here because of the phone call that absolutely confused me. And when I couldn't call back and find out more information, I've always been an information seeker. Some of you know me, and I do care. And I came because I wanted to be more informed. I appreciate that. But I do think that we need to know when the millage, if you approve that.
Yeah, and that's why we're here tonight.
That'll tell us exactly.
Thank you for coming, I love her. And we need, and that's why we're here. I, I do want to point out, though, that Plymouth Township did not send out that robo-call tonight. That was generated by political rivals from 2016, using the same types of anonymous, unsubstantiated political skullduggery that we saw two years ago, and that I think was thoroughly rejected by the voters.
And I would like to point out, as the deputy clerk, that the language on a ballot is, on a millage of any kind, is always very specific. It won't be up to. It, it'll tell you exactly what it is you're voting for, so that you can say yes or no and know what you're voting about. Yes, they, we have to do that as well. It has to show you what you're paying now for different things and what the, the impact this will have.
I just wanted to make a point, and I'm not sure it's entirely clear, but the, the board here, as well as the council and the city of Plymouth, has, has to make a decision. And that's not, and it's very simple, it's whether or not to approve an authority, the creation of an authority. We don't go out and, and ask for a millage, or a tax, or anything like that. We don't set it, we don't vote on it, we don't, we have nothing to do with that. Our sole responsibility will, to be, to either approve or not approve the creation of this authority. It's then that authority that will go out and request a millage increase. And, and, and maybe it's a finite point, maybe you don't care, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that technicality there.
Anybody else? I don't know if that's completely correct.
That's okay, my name is Alice McCarran, I'm Jerry's neighbor. I live in Lake, we live in Lake Point. And if I wanted to move and sell my house, I'm thinking.
Get that closer to your face.
Oh, I have to hold it this close?
Closer. You look like Frank Sinatra, that's good, it's a good look.
Okay, all right. You know, like, if somebody wanted to buy it, I think they'll say, what? We have to pay those taxes for 20 years? And the RISA one, too, R E S A, for, well, up to 21. And if I die, my kids maybe can't sell it because of that. That's all, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, in the back? Why don't you come forward? Sandy, she needs the mic.
Hi, Mary Wydell, I am at 50439 Fellows Hill Drive. I did a little research ahead of the meeting and looked at Canton Village Theater's schedule coming up. They're having 14 shows in March, seven shows in April, and 11 in May. It, it is a 400-seat theater, we discussed that earlier, and hosts not only performances, but also fine art exhibitions. It is just four miles from my house. The P A R C is four miles from my house. If the Canton Community Theater doesn't have a full schedule, why would there be a need for another theater that Township taxpayers are asked to fund? This just doesn't make sense for increasing taxes upon the Township residents, especially since we have so much debt that was discussed earlier in the meeting, mounting to the millions of dollars that the P A R C is also asking for. There are also numerous options for swimming pools, athletic clubs, and exercise facilities in the area for residents to choose from, including a brand-new one right next to the Township Hall. Residents currently have the freedom to choose where they swim and work out, and how much they will spend on it. With a forced tax for the city's P A R C complex, Township residents will not only be paying the taxes, but also having to pay for the swimming and working out, or whatever other activities they do have there. In addition, there are close to 28,000 Plymouth Township residents, and only 9,000 City of Plymouth residents. So this essentially means that Plymouth Township will be contributing a whole lot more to this complex than city residents. Right now, the library millage, we pay quite a majority of that compared to city residents. It's about an 80/20 split. Another, another point I'd like to bring up is, it's how we're investing money in the township, and, and what proposals are coming in for new millages. There's a, there's a lot of things going on with communities right now, and one of the biggest things is school safety. We've had a lot of incidences across the United States, and many more within the last week, just in our school systems in Michigan, or metro Detroit area. Wayne Westland Schools closed today due to a gun threat. There was a lockdown on Plymouth Canton Educational Park for four days, four days ago on February 23rd. Lakeshore High School in St. Clair Shores, a bullet was found yesterday, and a lockdown of the school occurred. Berkeley High School had a 9-millimeter bullet found, and a lockdown on, from that occurred on Friday, February 23rd. Garden City High School had a lockdown on February 21st.
You can comment on these issues at the end of the meeting, we're still focused on the park presentation.
Okay. Well, I, I can continue on and on with that, but we do need to focus a little bit more on what's really meaningful in the township, and school safety should be a priority.
Thank you. Anyone else on the park issue? Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Carter. I'm going to keep you with your three minutes, you know that.
Bill Carter, I live at 45969 Green Valley Road, here in the beautiful township of Plymouth. I really love this township. I moved here in 1990. And I want to see it thrive and grow. I'm 78, not 84 like the other lady. I don't know how many years I have left, but I'll tell you what. I would like to see this board get together with the Plymouth City Board and make a decision whether or not they, they can work together, and then give it us the opportunity, us, the opportunity to say yes or no. That's all, that's all they're asking for here? Just give, give us the opportunity. I'll be happy with it. I would love to see this complex. You know why? Because as the gentleman over there said, arts in this nation, in this state, has gone down the tubes. We need to bring it back. And we keep calling this a recreation center, it's really an arts and recreation center. There's lots of arts that go on, on, in that, that particular building. So I would like to see that for future generations. I'm not going to be here very long. I've got another decade, maybe I'm lucky. But I would like it for everybody else that follows. This is a great community, and we should, in my opinion, come together and make it happen. And if that means we compromise on five to two, to four to three, who's on the board, we need to do that, too. We need to show Washington what we showed them two years ago. It can be done. Thank you.
Just a real quick comment to underscore that, that, that what they ask is, is not for this board to, 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 you know, to go out and, and raise taxes. They ask is whether to allow you, the voters, to decide for yourselves whether you want to move forward with this project.
Okay, any other, any other? Any other questions on this item? All righty. I propose that we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll, we'll pick up with item three. And to the board, I would recommend that we table item I for tonight. When it comes up, item I. Item three is the tolling. Item I is the close session.
I wanted to make sure we weren't going to table three.
Do we have to reconvene, or we just took a? Uh, no, we're just coming back from a break, so we're back on the record for our cameraman in the back. All right, item three is a tolling agreement with the City of Plymouth. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago in closed session with our attorney, seeking his opinion on ways to proceed with negotiations. At this point, I'm looking for a direction from the board, and if anybody has a suggested motion, I would entertain it. Don't we want to talk about this first? Well, we, we already have. Do we really want a tolling agreement, or do we want to proceed to court? Or do we do, have to do both? Well, for something like this, I think we have to speak through our official actions, and I'd be happy to discuss a motion.
Before a motion, do we have litigation options?
Yes.
Meaning judicial proceedings in a court of law versus an arbitration proceeding? Or, or yes, you said yes.
Okay, there are, there are a number of options.
Expand on that.
Township and the city could agree to mediation, they could agree to binding arbitration without filing a lawsuit. Another alternative would be to file suit and to ask that this be put before the business court. I've been looking into that a little bit. The definition of business enterprise, as defined by the Business Court Act, is very broad. I believe we could fit municipalities within that definition if we could get this case in business court. What the business court judges do is refer to immediate mediation to try to save litigation As to whether or not this is necessarily a business court case, that's an open question. There's, there's not much case law on that. But I think if, if the Township Board did want to proceed in business court, we could do that.
When's our drop date on this, again?
June 30th.
No, but, but in other words, tonight? We have to do something tonight, absolutely. Is there something expiring, or we have until June 30th?
The extension expires on June 30th.
That's already in force, you mean?
I would still like to see, we give the authority to supervisor to terminate that extension anytime he wants within the next month, depending upon what kind of reaction we're getting from the, the city.
Well, the 30 days is in here already, right?
Yes, there's a 30-day notice provision to terminate the, the extension.
Right.
I think what Gary is suggesting is giving the supervisor the authority to execute on that 30-day notice, without having to go back to the board for approval.
Really? So let's talk about that, is that, why do we think that's a good thing to do? I don't, maybe I missed something.
And then we don't have to come back and do another vote for 30 days. We do it now and give supervisor the authority to go till the end of March, we basically say, Kurt, you decide, let's go. So he could do it tomorrow, he could do it, you know, anytime in the next two, three weeks.
And what would we look for by the end of March? A memorandum of understanding from the City of Plymouth, that they're going to pay, and then?
Yeah. Maybe a willingness to, to negotiate. I haven't seen that myself. And as we mentioned in closed session, you know, with that 30-day window is important. And we don't want to be fooling around with that.
So we've spent a lot of time on this. It began in, wow, probably 2013. And we had discussions and provided data in September of 2014, and then in January, oh, February of 2015. And we've been talking for a year now, almost.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Pardon?
I'm ready to make a motion.
A motion to do what, Gary?
For what I was just saying, to give, authorize the supervisor that ability to end the tolling agreement.
But ending it means you've got to go to do something, right? You've got to go to arbitration or court.
Well, we get the 30 days starts after he does that.
Say it again?
The 30 days starts after he says we end the tolling agreement. So we're, we're butting up on the other end of the limit pretty soon, anyway. But if we're, if we're just banging our heads against the wall, let's just get it done and, and move on.
But, but does that give an additional lever that we don't have right now?
Well, he could do it tomorrow, and we wouldn't have to have two more meetings to talk about it, to get it done, and maybe run up against that 30-day limit.
I, I would think it would give, it would give Kurt...
I would think it would give Kurt, in discussions, a little more leverage in the negotiation, just saying, "Come on, folks, we're going nowhere here." And I've been authorized by the board to cancel this tolling agreement. So do you want to get serious, or do you want to?
That's my concern.
And I think, instead of having a, and every time we have a meeting, they say, "Well, we can't make a decision. We have to go back to our board." A month goes by. I'm not convinced that this is going anywhere and will go anywhere by the end of June.
By the end of what?
By the end of June, which is when the tolling agreement expires.
Well, the last numbers we've seen, it basically threw Ryan Edwards' numbers back at us, that just, you know, left a whole bunch of things off the table. So, you know.
What are you saying?
It's...
I didn't understand what you said.
The last one that Kurt sent us that had what the city was talking about doing. You know, they're taking the statute of limitations off the, you know, and there's all kinds of other issues in there. So, you know, do you want to play or not? And that's the whole idea. Kurt's closer to the situation. I mean, you've been in the meetings too, Chuck. You know if they're serious about this, you know, it's time to go. And I've made that very clear in any discussions I've had with anybody in the city. I'm ready to go today, but...
Go where?
Let's...
To court?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's end this.
Well, we were in court, we had filed a suit before and withdrew it.
Right.
That was in 2016, the last quarter of 2016. And we've made no progress since. Well, yeah, we did. We came up with a number. The number's approximately 1.5 million. It was calculated.
Are we going to settle this in public now? I mean, we're throwing numbers around and everything. That's, from a strategy standpoint, I don't think that's very effective.
Well, I will...
Go for it.
I will say that I agree with where Trustee Heightman's going. We have negotiated. We were able to present much more solid numbers, is my understanding, of what we think the liability was. And we have one of our principal participants saying he doubts that we can make any more progress. So I think it's time to not wait. We have a much more solid case. If the city will agree to it within this timeframe, great. If not, we will have to pursue other alternatives.
You receptive to a motion? I move to authorize the supervisor to terminate the extension to tolling agreement with the City of Plymouth, pursuant to Section 4(c) of the agreement, at his sole discretion at any time up to March 27, 2018. Furthermore, that the supervisor report to the board on the status of negotiations with the city at the March 27 Board of Trustees meeting.
May I make a suggestion before that motion?
Okay, well, the motion's been made. I'm not gonna acknowledge the second yet. So Kevin, do you have a, is this a recommendation on a friendly amendment, or what?
Yes. I would also ask that the motion clarify what's gonna happen after, or if the supervisor does give the termination notice, what's gonna happen after that? Is it going to be a lawsuit? Is it going to be arbitration? Is it gonna be mediation?
I would recommend litigation because I believe that the issues that have been raised up and, I believe that the financial matters have been largely resolved. I think that there are outstanding legal issues that cannot be negotiated. And if we, there are issues that I don't want to get into, but we are familiar with, that I think can only, might only be solved in a court of law.
Gary, can you explain the magic of the March 27 date?
It's when we meet again?
Okay.
And it gives us?
It's a month from now. And even if I terminate on March 26th, then the 30, there's still another 30 days.
Okay, so on March 28th, then you lose your right to do that.
Okay, I got it. Then we come back, then we come back here.
Yep. But we need a hammer, so. Do you acknowledge the second?
Yeah, you need to say what you're going to do. We talked about that a little bit earlier.
So terminate the extension of the tolling agreement?
Terminate under Section 4, whatever, and proceed, and what, recommend litigation to the board?
Make it perfect so we don't have a glitch. This has got to be right.
Okay, if the supervisor receives the authorization to terminate the extension to the tolling agreement, and the supervisor exercises that power, after the 30 days is up, there should be a directive of what is going to take place. If it's gonna be litigation, there should be a directive for the attorney to file suit.
Why does that have to be part of this motion? Why can't we decide that after the tolling agreement has been terminated?
If it works out with respect to timing of board meetings, that's fine. We can do it that way.
We have a 30, I think during that 30-day period that's already in the tolling agreement, I think then we would have the opportunity to decide officially. I'm very, I'm uncomfortable... No, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of just unilaterally authorizing you to litigation. I would prefer that that be a board, a separate board motion, based on whether or not the tolling agreement is terminated or not. I mean, we're not saying we're gonna terminate the tolling agreement, but I think what we're saying is that we want to have that additional leverage in the next couple of weeks to underscore our strong desire to resolve the remaining legal issue.
Right. My concern would be because timing is such a sensitive issue, that if the 30-day notice provision is invoked or revoked, then we want to make sure that I have sufficient time to file suit on the 30th day. And I'll be ready. I mean, the complaint's ready. I'm gonna make, I gotta fine-tune it a little bit, but I'm just, I'm stressing time concerns here.
So just to clarify, the statute of limitations that was told by the agreement, that lapses on the 30th day, the day of the notice?
Yes.
So we would have to file suit by that 30th day?
Yes.
Then we do need the motion to direct that. Otherwise, we'll create our own legal problem.
Well, if there's gonna be a meeting where the board can take action and give a directive, a board directive to the attorney to file suit, within that 30-day timeframe, that concern is alleviated.
So we can do it at the March 27 meeting at that time?
Yes. If the supervisor receives the power to revoke the extension, and he does revoke the extension, there should be time for the board to give a directive within that 30 days to file suit.
Yeah, so we would be, worst-case scenario, you're looking at the first meeting in April.
Depending on when the 30 days...
Worst-case would be terminate, notice, would be termination on the 26th of March.
That's a Monday?
So there would be a board meeting on the 27th?
Right.
Yes, that would work.
That's why it's worst-case scenario. I just want the, I want that, I want that leverage.
I understand.
So we don't have to do anything with the motion?
Not, not that that is understood now.
Do you want to read, you want to reread the motion, Gary?
I move to authorize the supervisor to terminate the extension to tolling agreement with the City of Plymouth, pursuant to Section 4(c) of the agreement, at his sole discretion at any time up to March 27, 2018. Furthermore, that the supervisor report to the board on the status of negotiations with the city at the March 27 Board of Trustees meeting.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Mr. Clerk, why don't you take your role?
Trustee Heightman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes? Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up is supervisor and trustee comments. As I alluded to a few minutes ago, there will not be a meeting on March 13th. And, ah, the hour is late, so I'm gonna pass the baton over to Bob. Okay, Gary?
I'd like to say thank you to all those that have stayed, everybody who showed up tonight. Yeah, everybody who came tonight for the very first time because of the cowardice robo-calls. Please come back. We'd like to hear from you and see you show up again. The days of bullying are over here, and I just want you to, want you to know, hey, it's a new day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sit here, thanks.
Jack?
Very briefly, just to pass on positive comments from the public about these board meetings on Channel 12, recorded, played at appropriate times. Looking forward to when they will be live, hopefully in the near future. But good comments from the public about accessibility on Channel 12.
So they are on, on which, on Comcast or Huawei?
Both.
Really?
Channel 12 on Comcast and Channel 10 on Huawei.
How often are they on?
They were airing them when, Sue? 1 o'clock and 8 o'clock.
Every day.
Every day, 1 and 8?
Every day.
You can get two, you can get Jack Dempsey twice a day.
Channel 12 on Comcast and Channel 10 on Wide Open West. Coast to coast, in color, most of the time. Chuck Kermy?
Since we're talking about this and live streaming, the Our Lady of Good Counsel Church implemented live streaming on YouTube at almost no cost, did it internally. If you want me to give you the name of the guy, I could send it to you that... Maybe he could, maybe you could pay him to take care of us. Maybe we don't have the technology equipment here, I don't know. But remember, the people in the Citizens Committee, they said the same thing. Don't spend a lot of money on fancy stuff. Use YouTube.
And I think then we could use the tape, if you will, off the YouTube, or we can use the tape that we're using to tape this, put that on YouTube.
We're talking about live streaming.
Reverse the process and do it live.
Live.
One other item is, now that the spring is here, the Rain soccer team, the township, and Steve Anderson, are we gonna move forward and not let the Lake Point Soccer Park go another season without being managed, turf managed? If you could talk to them, and maybe they're...
I have, and we've had a lot of discussions about it. It gets into the intricacies of soccer, soccer play, turf management, letting fields rest for a season, or how, you know, where people are supposed to play and rotating them. Chuck, if you want to talk directly to Steve Anderson about that, that's fine with me. I mean, I can, he will explain it to you in great detail.
But how do we make the, get them to, him to start doing the work, or whatever?
Take over the...
The management of that turf?
No, they are working on it, yeah.
So you've authorized him to do it?
No, I wouldn't go that far, but I mean, they're, they're looking at options.
Okay, so it's not dead and we're gonna get ready for the spring, Nate, if we're locked?
What's not dead?
The idea of having them...
No, I don't think the idea is dead at all, no.
Okay, all right, good. Because the season, if we do it again, another year, it could really damage the grass.
Right. All right, any other public comments? It's public comment time now. Hearing none, going once. Chiefs, you guys are okay? All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.